Hey, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this September third, two thousand and twenty five. Beautiful sunny afternoon, except when it's raining, but anyway, thank you all for being here today. We have a number of important topics to discuss this afternoon. We appreciate your patience in the beginning of our meeting. Commissioner Herbst has indicated he'll be late. And so I waited a few minutes thinking he might arrive, but I guess he'll be a little bit longer. Now, we usually start out our our meetings with the communications. So before, all right, so we'll start with our communication. We'll start with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the Charter Review Board. Mr. Weiss has indicated that he's going to be a few minutes late coming to this meeting. So if he's not here when we get to that, we'll kind of put that off until he arrives. So starting with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, is there somebody here on the board that's going to make a presentation?
Mayor, I almost, I just want to ask staff about this. This almost seems a little bit out of step because they're talking about something in April here. But we met with them June thirtieth and sort of dealt with all these issues that they're asking us to talk about.
So what is it? So, Chris?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commission, Chris Cooper, Assistant City Manager. So the Affordable Housing Advisor Committee is just asking for an update on the three items that were the topics of your quarterly meeting with them in June. So we are prepared to share an update with them at their September eighth meeting, I believe, next week. And we will see if they want any follow up past that, but we'll also be scheduling their next quarterly joint meeting with you soon.
Okay, so there's really nothing to discuss today?
Right.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So we'll jump to the next agenda item and wait for Mr. Weiss to appear. So why don't we start with CF one Performance Audit of Fuel Consumption and Billing? Mr. Riley?
Patrick Riley, City Auditor. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice, well, not the Vice Mayor yet, and Commissioners. The City Auditor's Office completed a performance audit of fuel consumption and billing. This audit was part of our annual audit plan. This audit represents part two of the fuel operations audit. Part one, which was brought to you back in October, mainly dealt with internal evaluations of the operation. This audit really focuses on substantive testing of fuel consumption and billing. The objective was to conduct a detailed examination of the city's fuel operations, which put an emphasis on verifying the accuracy of fuel consumption and fuel billing processes. Within the Public Works Department is a Sustainability Division, which includes Fleet Services. They are responsible for the fuel operations and the technology. They have five fueling stations that they provide unleaded and diesel fuel to the city's personnel. There's approximately one thousand nine hundred and seventy vehicles and other units. Fleet Services utilizes two methods to control access to fuel, the Cansever device and the fuel fobs. The Cansever, just real quick, I don't want to get too far into it, is a device that's plugged into the vehicle's onboard diagnostic port that provides information. And the fobs also do that with a different type of electronic communication. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, the Fleet Services dispensed approximately one point three million gallons of fuel at a cost of approximately four million dollars to the city's departments and authorized users. Fleet Services rely on two primary systems to manage, track, fuel and vehicle performance. This is EJ Ward of View System and the Samsera software. EJ Ward enables precise control over fuel access by allowing users to set specific restrictions on the fueling asset level. For example, restricting the number of times you could fuel in a given day as a control. The Samsera provides fleet management with insight into vehicle performance, fuel consumption, idling, route efficiency, and driver behavior. Fleet Operations utilized Samsera device on nine hundred and thirty eight of its estimated one thousand two hundred and seventy one vehicles.
We have one thousand two hundred and seventy one vehicles, or we have one thousand two hundred and seventy one vehicles that are eligible to be fueled by the city?
Well, we have, we have vehicles that are the main point of our audit. We have like large fire trucks and things like that that is, we fuel, but I'm specifically dealing with the vehicles that have the Samsera device.
Right, I know, but that's, so we have, this is police, police cars?
Yes.
Regular vehicles for the fire department and code enforcement and all the others. We have one thousand two hundred cars?
Yes, yes.
So we have one car for every two employees, approximately?
Well, I'd have to look into exactly what the.
How many cars do we have on the commission? Are we, are we sharing any cars that I'm not aware of? Not yet, okay. I guess we're, I guess we're entitled to something, right?
We have about three thousand employees, many of which are part of our public safety teams, and they utilize vehicles.
We have five hundred and fifty, approximately five hundred and fifty police officers, okay? And we'll say an equal number of firefighters, but they don't all drive cars.
Right. I have, I have a breakdown of.
It's interesting. I just didn't realize we had that many vehicles in operation with the city. Okay.
Okay.
And none of them are electric?
Some of them are, yeah, some of them are, mostly in, I think DSD has, has some and I think a couple of other departments.
Okay.
But I can get you that breakdown.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The audit involved a comprehensive review of one hundred percent of the fuel consumption data extracted from the EJ Ward system and Samsera system. In addition to our thorough examination of the infor invoices related to fuel billing. And the audit period was basically October twenty twenty three through September twenty twenty four, and the billing area was a little bit different, April twenty twenty three through March of two thousand and twenty four. Our conclusion is the city auditors found that the city's fuel operation, including administrative and oversight of the fuel consumption, requires several enhancements. Key areas of concern are billing accuracy, adherence to the policy and standards manual, and consistent enforcement of the procedures. Additionally, better implementation and monitoring of the systems optimizations are needed to ensure more efficient and accurate and reliable management of fuel usage. During the audit, we identified opportunities for enhancement in the areas of idling of vehicles, control over dispensing fuel, calculations for fuel billing, and controls over the WEX and P car fuel usage. Management has updated policies and standards related to the fuel usage. The key is to enhance the policy and adherence to the policy. The keen finding I would like to discuss is finding number one relating to vehicle idling, the policy and the recommendations. The fleet vehicle and equipment idling policy lacks sufficient clarity and specificity permitting vehicles idling in situations where it may not be needed. The financial impact is, for example, is the data from the Samsera system captures data from on the nine hundred and thirty eight vehicles that have the Cansever device. And that, in the period that we looked at, the amount of idling related to the city vehicles consumed three hundred and thirty seven, approximately three hundred and thirty seven thousand gallons of fuel in fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, which resulted in expenditures of approximately one point one million dollars. And if you extrapolate that through the rest of the vehicles that don't have the Samsera device, it's approximately one point four million dollars related to idling. As I mentioned, the city spends about approximately four million dollars for fuel in fiscal year two thousand and twenty four, and approximately thirty five percent of the fuel cost is attributed to idling. Excessive idling contributes to increased maintenance costs, shortens the lifespan of the city vehicles, causes additional engine wear, and accumulates unnecessary engine hours. Additionally, we reviewed the top departments through a data analysis of all of thirty of the highest idling durations that we found. We, of course, excluded vehicles that were over ten thousand, you know, these were vehicles under ten thousand, and we eliminated the heavy equipment of vehicles. And in some, some instances, we, we found vehicles idled up to eleven hours. There were instances where two other departments had idlings between three point five and five point five hours, respectively. We also did an additional consecutive days scenario for April two thousand and twenty four and also in April two thousand and twenty five to see any changes after the initial change to the, to the policy. But we did, we still continue to see some excessive idling going on. And also, in addition to the financial costs, you know, there's an environmental impact that's a factor which is discussed in the, in the report. The issue is, is that core policies and practices do not effectively limit vehicle idling, leading to unnecessary fuel consumption. The policy broadly permits idling for various activities without setting clear time limits or enforcing strict guidelines. Many of the vehicles either lack a start stop device, have them disabled, or drivers do not consistently use them. The effect is while some idling is unavoidable, prolonged idling, including but not limited to the examples I listed, have a, have a financial impact on the city and environmental issues. Some of the recommendations we suggested is that the city manager work with the Director of Public Works and develop some additional changes to the policy for idling. We recommend explore transitioning to more fuel efficient vehicles across the department, prioritizing and fuel economy in future purchases. And this initiative was recently discussed during the City Commission Conference on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five. Prioritizing features such as automatic start and stop technology and future vehicle purchases to reduce idling and enforcing the use of existing start and stop systems that can save a lot of fuel. Also, we have a campaign going, but exploring electrical vehicles or hybrids is another opportunity. Increase driver awareness through regular training and financial environmental impacts of idling to foster responsible driving practices. Developing key performance indicators which could support goal setting and measure progress in reducing idling times for city vehicles. And subsequent, or, you know, when we were completing the audit, the PD Department actually developed a policy, an internal policy that is going to aim at reducing unnecessary idling that I think could be helpful to incorporate in the existing policy of the city. Management concurred with our findings and is, and is implementing some of the comments that we address in our report. This completes my audit presentation. I would like to thank Finance and the Public Works Department with and Substanzability Sustainability Division, specifically Drew Newstrom for assisting us with the audit, and I want to reach out and thank my audit staff that worked on the audit. At this point, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Riley?
Pat, I just would like to know, I read all of the managers' responses in terms of the five findings, and thank you for your work. But you're all good now with the manager's response, and you're both on the same page and how we go forward?
Yes, we worked together and had an exit conference where we discussed that, and then they give us a written responses, and we, we incorporated, incorporated them into the report.
Okay, so everything's good between the two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Pat, thank you for the report. It's very detailed. I do have a question pertaining to the start and stop devices. It says many either lack it or they've been disabled. Do you have a number for the ones that were disabled and why they were disabled?
Um, well, I don't have an exact number. I know some individuals feel that if they have that on, it affects their battery power with the equipment on their vehicle, but, you know, we researched that and determined that's not really correct. There's, there's backup in availability to allow that, that program to work.
Thank you. That's the only question that I had.
Ben, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Pat, thanks for your great work on this. What brought this topic to your mind to investigate, which was great to do so? I'm just interested in your process.
It was probably what we do each year. We have an audit plan that we put together and looked at some areas that maybe we've never looked at in a while. And, and we look at the, you know, the materiality of it and, and other factors that we come up to decide, well, let's take a look at that. So that, that's, we have a process of selecting what's going to be on it each, each year.
Great, yeah. Just please keep doing that because there's all, I just love the efficiencies and improvements you find when you do these. So thank you and keep going.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. You know, the idling of vehicles, especially police officers, it seems like it's a culture, you know, like everywhere they go, for every stop, they keep the car running. Now, some of the responses that I had gotten in the past, this is even years ago, was that, well, there's equipment in the vehicle that requires the car to be chilled before, so that if it's not, then it would destroy data, it would destroy the equipment. Is there any basis to that assertion?
I mean, I, I know that there are certain vehicles that need to have the vehicle running for pharmaceutical type of things and things like that. But, and I, I believe, you know, we had a lot of discussions and we. But, um, and I, and I believe, you know, we had a lot of discussions and we, we did the research where a lot of people feel if you turn off the car, then getting all your equipment back up, it takes a while to do that. But, um, you know, we're, we're more concerned with, with idling for consecutive hours is, is kind of one of the concerns that we had. We, we saw a lot of, um, you know, like as I mentioned, there's, there's a lot of delays, bridges go up and so forth that you can't really help. But, for example, like I was saying, the stop-start features would save a lot of gas. But, um, it, it, it really is, um, it's the continuous, uh, uh, use of, um, consecutive hours is what we really caught our attention in, in the, the review of the data that we think we can cut down on. Sometimes I know that they have to leave the, uh, the lights on, but there's, there's also a lot of, um, LED type of lights that can be, um, used. And there's a lot more technology coming out that can save in additional battery power that's, that's being put in some of the vehicles. And I know one of the issues about not having that stop and start, uh, item in a car is that, you know, certain vehicles that we buy for the police version, um, package, they don't have that. But, you know, I, I believe we could put anything we, we want in, in a vehicle if we really wanted to. So, that's something in the future that we, I think we should consider, because there's, you know, traffic in, in Fort Lauderdale, there's a lot of stop and, and, you know, go things that take five minutes, eight minutes, 10 minutes, um, would, would be a, a big help just to cut down the, the cost.
Especially railroad crossings.
Exactly.
You know, drawbridges and things like that, I agree. Um, well, what, again, getting back to my first comment, though, there seems to be a culture, and I don't know whether the culture is by necessity or just by design, where, um, every time I have been where there are police vehicles in the area, they always seem to be idling. And, and again, is it, is it by necessity because of equipment? Um, I understand sometimes the K-9 units, they have to keep the car running because there's a, there's an animal in the car, but that's rare. There are, you know, most vehicles don't have animals in the car. Um, so, yeah, it really concerns me. And I'll tell you, an incident that I experienced a number of years ago, um, I was at the Walgreens on 26th Street, and I, uh, parked my car, and right next to my car was a police vehicle running. And I thought, gee, I wonder what's going on in here? Okay? And, um, so I go in there, and the officer was picking out greeting cards. And, uh, so I thought, okay, well, maybe the officer's on break, but why would they keep the car running? Right? Um, but the thing is that it's a culture within the department, and I think that would might be a good starting point to find a way to establish guidelines where that culture is, um, is ref, is refined or, or modified or eliminated, because, you know, it wastes a lot of money. And it adds a lot of pollution to the environment. And, and you're right, it does create a lot of wear and tear on the vehicle. So, uh, we, um, I applaud your efforts to try to, you know, find ways to try to improve, you know, efficiency. And, um, and, um, and I think that, you know, this is, like I said, it's been going on for a very long time, and, uh, you're the first that really started to dig in and, and recommend, recommend, recommend ideas and approaches to try to eliminate that. So, thank you, Pat. Anyone else have any questions? All right, there being none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I understand that Mr. Weiss is now in the audience. Are you here? Way in the back. Did you not buy, you bought the cheap seats today? All right, let's move on, back to, uh, um, communications. And we have communications from the, uh, the charter revision board and Mr. Weiss. You're not both allowed to talk. Stand there and look pretty. And no whispering in his ear.
Hello, thank you for having us.
I appreciate your coming from out of town specifically to be here. I know that was a sacrifice and, you know, unnecessary, but that's definitely appreciated.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
So, I think you have a pretty complete report from, um, from the manager's office as to where we have been. It's been a long process, and with the turnover in the board, uh, Commissioner Sorensen knows that a lot of this information, we've gone over twice and sometimes three times. But we have come to a point where we've, there was a, an original memo from the city attorney's office, there were some items from the city commission, and we have gone through all those items. So, there's two specific questions that the board wanted to ask, which you have in front of you. One deals with how much further you want us to go, and then the second one deals with P3 projects when there's a, because there's a new provision in state law. So, the board is unanimous in, in being willing to do whatever you ask us to do, um, with the following proviso. If you want a full review of the charter, um, we need very significant, the city attorney's office has been great, they've helped us out a lot. Um, Paul Bangell's been with us from the day one. But in order to do a full review of your charter from beginning to end, we, I mean, it's almost a full-time job for somebody for a while, because what happened, and I've tried to help out and done a lot of drafting, but it's really more than sort of I signed up for. But it's a, uh, the city attorney's office needs to start from the beginning, go through every single section, and present us with either policy questions to discuss or just things that need to be changed or clarified in order to make your charter more compact. So, that's a big, a very big project. We're willing to do it, but with the provide, everybody on the, on our board felt that we needed very significant help from the city attorney's office.
Well, first of all, um, I think I speak for the entire commission when we thank each and every one of members of the board for the work that they put into this. Um, uh, you know, you're asking about, um, you know, what we expect or would like to ask of each of you going forward, and I think that, that certainly, um, uh, in, you know, it deserves a conversation here on the commission. Um, but before we get to that, um, there, there was a comprehensive review of many of the, of the paragraphs and covenants and clauses that you did undertake. And so to go even further and deeper into the analysis, I don't think we're, we need, I don't think we can do that yet, because we haven't first digested the first, um, the first recommendations, some of which are, some of which are fundamental and, uh, and, you know, need discussion here on the commission, and some of which are ministerial and just cleanup clauses, right? And I don't, and for those of us who have reviewed the cleanup clauses, I don't think there's any objection, but they still need to go on the ballot, right? So, um, you know, that's a decision that the commission would have to make, whether or not to, to address the cleanup clauses and, and, um, and ensure that going forward that there's no misunderstanding or, or misinterpretation as to what those recommendations are and how they apply to the function of the city commission. Uh, now, as far as the fundamental changes are concerned, um, I think you mentioned the public-private partnership statute. Now, the statute, as I understand, as it has been revised at the state level, is not mandatory, but, but suggestive, if, if I'm not mistaken.
I would, I would defer on the impact of the state statute to the city attorney's office.
Right.
Because they're the ones who brought it to our attention, so.
Well, it's on an agenda item for today. We might get to it, we might not, but if we do, you're right. We'll let, we'll let our city attorney address that and see, um, where, where the city needs to go, if at all, on that. Then there were other things about parks and, and, um, the requirement for, uh, unanimity to, um, to, uh, change park designation to non-park designation and so forth. Um, and that's, and I, and, you know, those are things that we can support, but we haven't had that conversation yet. So, um, personally, I would love to think that the charter revision board could, um, kind of hang in there, no particular agenda or mandate at this point. There were some items that I had wanted to discuss, uh, which were, you know, we changed the charter a few years ago, uh, with regard to the date of the election. We moved it to November. Um, but did it bring out more, um, people who were aware of what they were voting for? You know, um, when I was first elected mayor, I think I had, even though it was 65% of the vote, I think it was like 14, 15,000 people. The second time I ran, um, 50,000 people voted for me. So, did those 35,000 people know that they were voting for mayor, you know, and who they were voting for? You know, we don't know the answer to that. The other thing is, um, should we try to implement another, the primary system again? Uh, we eliminated the primary system, and we ended up, uh, allowing people to be, uh, elected, uh, by plurality. And, um, does that work for the city? We have to have that discussion, I think, on the commission. So, uh, so things like that, uh, I would like to see the commission address, because they are fundamental to the operation of the city, and we want to do what's in the best interest. I see Miami, for example, uh, has their election this November, which is an off-year, and they're looking to change it to a, um, to an election cycle that meets the, the federal election cycle. It was turned down, and so they're gonna continue to work on, on odd years. But, um, you know, has that worked for us? We have not had that conversation with the council civic associations to see what the feedback has been from the community. Um, and, uh, it's more than just hearing and having a joint workshop with the, with, with your board, it's really how, how is this working for the people, um, in general? So, so I, I personally would love to see you, you know, there still, and there's no sunset for this. The board is an ongoing, um, board, but I don't see any reason for you to meet until we resolve some of those issues.
Because one of the things that's happened in the, with the first, when I first got on the board, there was a lot of, um, input from various groups saying this needs to be changed, and that needs to be changed, and this was horrible, and this is great. And what's happened is that has sort of died off. And so we're really not getting, it's, we're almost shadow boxing. You know, there's nobody coming to our meetings and say, wow, you have to change this, it's terrible, um, you know, or this is great, don't touch it. So, right now, we're just sort of, at this point, we're sort of making up things to, you know, just going through chapter by chapter, and that's where we got to the second part of it. So, I think it makes sense for us just to take a break for a little bit.
Take a break. Um, and, uh, and, you know, you fed us with a full platter, we haven't been able to really digest it yet, and I think that maybe needs a conversation amongst the commissioners and an agenda item, maybe in the future, Raquel. And, uh, and let's talk about some of the changes that are being recommended and see which ones we want to go forward with and which ones we, we are not interested in. Okay?
Yeah, there, there were, I don't know if you went, there were some items from, um, human resources that we did not get to. And so I don't know what you, how you want to deal with those items.
So, there were a couple of items from human resources that we needed some clarification on before we could bring it to the charter review board, so I would anticipate that if we, if they do want to convene, there's that item they could talk about. I'm sorry, Anthony Faehardo, Director of Development Services. Uh, and then there, uh, was the question of strong mayor. We'd reached out to your office, the charter review board had asked for you to come and, and speak on that topic to give them some clarity on what the idea was. So, if we could maybe schedule that.
Maybe we could schedule that, I can give you my thoughts as I, you know, meet other mayors around the country to see how it works for their communities and so forth. It may not be right for the city, but it might be something worth exploring based on pros and cons to having a strong mayor form of government. So, I mean, we take a different kind of person sitting here, someone who has more administrative skills. Uh, right now, it's more of a political kind of, uh, role. So, um, but, uh, okay, all right.
One last thing, Mayor. We had developed an outreach plan, and I know there was concerns over the survey, but other than the survey itself, would you be okay with us moving forward with that outreach? We had a really good meeting with the, um, council Fort Lauderdale civic associations that was received pretty well, and I think that there is a desire out there for people to get more information and to have that disseminated.
If I could just interject really quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
The last time that we had a discussion about surveys, uh, I think the commission wanted to see survey questions in advance of it going out, as well as, uh, making sure that the content of the surveys, um, was fully understood by those who would be taking the surveys. And I think the direction the last time was that we would have more of an educational sort of outreach campaign, so that people in the various districts and neighborhoods could understand some of the salient topics that the charter revision board would be discussing and that the commission would decide upon. So, I don't know that we have reached that point where there is a consensus on the major topics, um, that would impact our outreach approach.
I understand. And maybe, maybe then we need to make this a conference agenda item where the commission can take 45 minutes or an hour and really go through the recommendations that you've given us so far, just to talk amongst ourselves, not so much to have a joint workshop, but just to talk amongst ourselves and, um, and figure out, you know, what, what recommendations the, the commission wants to move forward on. And, uh, so why don't we do that? And you can continue to meet, you know, if you, on the things that you mentioned, uh, but I think that, um, and I'd like to hear from any members of the commission what their thoughts are, but, um, those seem to be the things that I feel would be in the best interest of the city and in the, uh, taking the best advantage of the people that are volunteered on this board. Any member of the, Ben, do you want to say something?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, thank you, Richard and the whole, uh, committee for your work. Thanks, Anthony, for helping. Uh, Raquel, just kind of going to a high level. So, any changes that we want to make on the charter have to be voted on, okay? So, those have to.
By the people, right?
Yeah.
Those exactly, by, by the residents of, of the city. So, um, if we were to put forward suggested charter changes, those would be put forward when? August 2026, November 2026? Do we know?
I would defer to the attorney and the clerk on the schedule.
If we were ready, we could put it on for the November 2026.
Great. So, we could put it in November 2026 if we wanted? Fantastic. When, just walking it back, when would we need from a commission standpoint to vote on, approve what we would like on for, on for the November 2026 election?
Let me give you a timeline here.
Yep.
While he's doing that, just for clarity, I want to be able to report back to the board tomorrow night. On the P3 issue, the question that you're doing, you're gonna discuss that and let us know what you want to do with it, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And on the going forward, on a fuller review of the charter, on hold for now, and you, and you're gonna take a first step and go through the work that we've done? And if you want us to go further, you'll let us know?
Yes.
Is that clear?
That's my opinion. I just, I just want to hear from everyone else on the commission, if there's any disagreement on that, you know, or, or concurrence.
I, I do have one.
Yeah, I mean, so I've got thoughts on that, but it's gonna be informed by all the questions I'm asking right now. But go ahead if you all want to talk about something else.
I do have a request that the charter revision board, uh, review the cleanup items related to human resources and the administrative procedures that we have surrounding that. So, I would appreciate their review of that, so we can hopefully incorporate that in the city commission's discussion.
Any other questions or comments of Richard?
Uh, if Commissioner Sorensen is done, I'd like to just throw a few things out there.
I'm not done, because David's still working, but go ahead, Vice Mayor. While he's working.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, so, I would very much like to see us move forward. I was very disappointed that all the work that was done last time kind of came to a screeching halt and that we rejected what they had done, because I thought they had done the yeoman's job of reviewing what I think were some of the, you know, top-of-mind issues. And, and I, and I was unfortunately very disappointed that all that labor and effort that went into that, uh, didn't go anywhere. And I'm also disappointed that we haven't picked up the mantle with it and done anything with the information that they've given us. To your point, Mayor, that we need to have a discussion, um, we should have done that. And I'm, I'm disappointed that we're sort of behind the curve on it, but I think we can correct that going forward. So, I, I hope we do that. I would also support very strongly, uh, the idea that we have to dedicate enough support for the work to get done in a timely fashion. I, I know, I know I've sat with Paul on charter revision years ago when I was a city auditor, and he's done, he's done a tremendous amount of work and has a lot of experience, uh, and, but if we need to add more to that in order to facilitate the work of the board, then I think we need to do that. You know, we've got some, some very, uh, very high-powered, competent people on this board, and I don't want to waste their time. You know, uh, Ri- Richard's my appointee, and, uh, he's probably written more charters than anybody else in South Florida for, for half of these cities that are down here. We have an incredible resource in him and with everybody else that's serving on it. And I want to make sure that the volunteers' time is, is well utilized. Um, you know, I've been a volunteer in my lifetime, and there's nothing worse. You know, I've been a volunteer in my lifetime and there's nothing worse than putting all that effort and committing yourself to those meetings and going through all that and having it go nowhere. It's, it's one thing to, you know, have it debated and turned down, but just to have it go nowhere is frustrating. So, I want to make sure that what we're doing shows the full support of the commission for their work and that we carry it forward. Next thing, I, I kind of have a question too for, for Mary while you're up there. Tell me the, the role of the Council of Civic Associations last time around. How much engagement did we have? What, you know, what did that add? Because I know you've got a little experience with that too.
You mean as far as the, as far as the, the recommendations made by the Charter Revision Board?
Just the engagement, just the engagement, the outreach, you know, what was done? Because, you know, we're talking a little bit about doing surveys and things like that and I always thought the role of the Council of Civic Associations was to communicate a lot of what the Charter Revision Board is doing to all of our civic associations, HOAs and all of our neighborhood groups. And, and I just want to understand from your perspective, how did that work?
First, is it okay that I?
Yeah, just for, for the record, we did advertise a meeting of the Charter Revision Board, so you're okay under the sunshine.
And also, I'm asking for sort of retrospective, not prospective. I just want to understand in the past how this worked.
I would say what happened.
Mary Peliquin.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Peliquin, past president of the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations. And I was president when we had a presentation from the prior CRB board a year ago, about, whenever that was. And first of all, it was a lot. It was a great program put together by Anthony. He brought it and it was in the evening. And I had gone to most of those meetings, I wasn't on the board yet of the CRB board, but I did go to a lot of those meetings along with Art Liaison, Jim Concanon. So, I was familiar with what was being presented, but it was a lot. And in hindsight, we never should have tried to communicate all those items. That was just, it was way too much, way late. Was too much, too late. And it was a good program and I was interested, but I, I looked around the room at the fifty or so civic association leaders and, you know, they, there's no way they were going to absorb that. So, that didn't work and it was, it was late. It was kind of like right before you all, right around this time that it was presented to you all. If you recall, it was in the, like, May and I think you had to, like, digest all that information by June for it to be on.
May of last year.
Yeah, last year, the ballot, at least that's what I recall. So, going forward, the thought was to get it in smaller pieces to the, right? To the council and Anthony did come, he had a great program. It was entertaining, believe it or not. We actually made the Charter Revision items look, you know, entertaining. So, you know, and it was, it can be done, it can be done. So, just.
There's laughter and cheer.
But, you know, we kind of stopped when the survey, we realized the survey went out without any input from, from the commission, so we, we kind of like just backed off of that because that will take some work from council members to go out to their districts. And, I mean, it can be done, we had a plan, but we just pulled back. So, I, I think smaller pieces of information over a period of time and not, you know, the whole bucket of the river at the end of the day. I think that's what I think.
One of the things I recall from previous iterations of Charter Revision is there was almost never anybody there from the public when I sat up on there as, as staff. Has that changed at all? Are, are we seeing, and look, this is some really dry stuff. I think the only thing that's about as dry as, as looking at the charter is looking at an auditor's report. Sorry, Pat. As a recovering auditor, I can say that, so.
We have very few visitors. Sometimes we have one visitor that comes, you know, on a regular basis. Do they make it through the whole meeting? No. Every once in a while, I look at the recording of the meeting, but I'm always surprised at how many people looked at the recording. It's not a huge number, but, you know, it's, you know, people are looking at it, which is difficult because that particular, I don't need to tell anybody here that looks at recordings from the conference room on the eleventh floor, you know, you can, you can lose a lot of the words in that. So, no, we have, I would say, very little, okay, so I want to sure I'm right, people come in and sit there, do that.
Okay. I remember Paul Chetl used to show up all the time, he was about it.
Oh, haven't, haven't seen that.
If I may ask.
Yeah.
Regarding the, the board itself, there's five members. Is that at capacity? Do we have any vacancies? Is there a need for more members on the board? You're talking about how, how, you know, detailed this is. Is the number sufficient?
I, I think it's fine, personally. I think it's fine. I think because it is complicated and there is a lot of legal verbiage, like every time I see the comma, "to with," comma, I just go, oh my God, why they?
That's always trouble.
So, I, I think we have enough conversation and if you add more people, it's, it, I don't think it's, would be helpful.
It doesn't preclude others from going to the meetings and public comment and all that.
They can, yeah.
And then the other question is, is timing, the time of the meeting, does that have some reserve maybe on participation? It's five-thirty, right? Your meeting is five-thirty on a, on what, a Thursday?
Thursday, Thursday.
Just, just having conversation, trying to figure out, thinking in my mind, what can we do to get that additional input? Because there's some boards where you have a, a significant amount of people that come and they really are engaged and understood and yes, I'm with you with, you know, to, to with and wherefore, all of that, that can be a turnoff. But also, this is, we know this to be so vital and how do we get our neighbors to engage? So, that's why I'm asking about the time. Is that something we maybe need to consider?
I would say that in the city, there's very few people that go out on the internet and look to see what the agenda of the Charter Revision Board is. That's, that's one, you know. So, I mean, if we really wanted to, like, excite people to come to a meeting, which we've done on, you know, with the council and things like that, maybe, you know, there's some kind of a forward communication before the meeting, like, hey, we're going to be discussing strong mayor and this is what it all means. You know, that might make people come running up the stairs with torches and pitchforks. I don't know, but I think, you know, nobody's going to go out, very few people are going to go out and look at the agenda for the Charter Revision Board and if they are, I mean, I don't know that they're really going to, really understand what they're looking at. I mean, I don't, I don't know how to make it pre-exciting so that what people would come. As far as the timing, five-thirty, six or six-thirty? There's people there at five-thirty, but they never stay through the whole meeting. A rare, somebody stays through the whole meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry. With the individuals who are coming, what's the demographics, age? Because I'm, I'm thinking like five-thirty in the evening, certain demographics are just getting off of work.
Okay.
They may have an interest, that's why I'm asking about the time. And then on the flip side of that, Mayor, City Manager, is there any way that through Stratcom, you know, we are really doing a great job with our social media where they are putting out information of things that are going on in the city? And they do a great job spinning many topics. And I was like, oh, okay, I didn't realize that that was that entertaining in a sense. So, is that something that can be considered? Because my concern, we know how vital this is and then it's going to come to a point where someone is going to have to vote. And whatever else we can do to include them and make them aware of what we're changing, what we want to enhance, they need, we need to do all we can to include them. If they choose not, that's understood, but when we get to the point where we can say, out of fifty things, we did forty-five things, I, I would feel comfortable in a sense, making it a full buffet.
We had a plan. The Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations has a plan. And we have district reps, one, two, three and four. And those and for, you know, maybe there will be three or four different programs because we wouldn't want to take everything we've done all at once or maybe, I don't, that's to be seen. And go into the neighborhood, for instance, pre-commission meetings, whatever other meetings there are in the districts. And that would take more than just the district rep. A couple of us would have to go, you know, and maybe, you know, we could have some, like, terrific, you know, more interesting ways of showing what these changes could or could not mean and why it would be vital that they, you know, pay attention. So, that was our intention. We just, the council didn't go forward because we got kind of stymied with the first thing that we did with a survey. So, that's, was the plan after we got the approval from the commission, I think. And so, that was the plan. I mean, we can still do that.
I would, I would just add that I'm slightly offended that our meetings are not exciting. We have snacks and everything. And, and we, we, but really, just to give you, there's only two people that attend our meetings, that's it.
Maybe we need to revisit the snacks.
We have very good snacks.
We have Oreos.
I wanted to thank Junya and Anthony and Paul, they've done a really great job with the snacks and also helping us out with the rest. I think that if you wanted to get a lot of public, we, we used to get more public participation when you had these hot, we had five or four or five hot topics, Commissioner Sorensen will remember, the parks, public-private partnerships, the election, swearing in of people. I think that if we had a meeting where we publicized the fact that we're going to talk about how the city leases parks, I think you'd have a thousand people there, right? Or if we talked about something that's, but what's happened is that we've covered those things three times and I think that, you know, people, we've done the work. So, but I think that there's certain hot topics. If you had a meeting where we advertised, we're going to discuss strong mayor form of government, maybe you'd get some people. But sort of a targeted approach with a targeted publicity towards a particular topic, maybe you'd get some more people, but. Something, we need a hook, right?
Okay, Ben, did you want to continue your, your?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mayor. All right, David, so, okay, November twenty-twenty-six.
So, for November twenty-twenty-six, the ballot questions would be due on June eighth by five PM.
Due on June eighth.
And they require a certified copy of the ordinance. With the exact ballot questions on it. And the last meeting before that due date would be June second, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. So.
We have some time.
Ideally, yep, so ideally by May, let's say, twenty-twenty-six, the city commission would have to approve questions to put on the ballot for November.
Correct.
Okay. And just, so we're all understanding, November twenty, November twenty-twenty-six, the only other election is August twenty-twenty-six. There's primary elections, but November seems preferable to me, but if you could articulate why November's preferable or is August an option or?
I guess August could.
This has fewer attendance, that's the problem.
Right, yeah, fewer attendance and then I, I would also say in, but timeline, when we were kind of building it up, we didn't want to rush anything. So, it was more, we, we always kind of looked at the November timeline to have the time to have the discussions, bring it to the commission and then actually create the ordinances and, and questions.
Okay, fantastic. So, May, by May twenty-twenty-six, have the city commission vote on those. Fantastic. Then, Mayor, I think your next, your, your other point about having this as a conference item, I think, as a commission, I think would be great. So, what are we thinking, Raquel, Mayor, in terms of timing of that?
Well, I'd like it, I'd like it not to be like Agenda Today where there's, you know, seven conference items. If we could just have two or three, so that gives us an opportunity to have a full-throated debate over some of these things, which I think are going to be required and then, and we may actually get some turnout from people. If we say we're going to have singers and dancers, so it might be entertaining for them.
It's good, snacks.
Fireworks at the end, I don't know. But, I mean, let's, let's take it seriously and, and let's allot enough time to be able to have that, that discussion. So, moving forward and we'll decide if we want things to move forward or not to move forward or if we want to change the wording, you know, gives us an opportunity to word Smith and is also figure out what the priorities are.
Yep, so, Raquel, what do you think?
Would the preference be for this fall before the holidays?
I'd like it sooner, Mayor, because here's my thinking on timeline. I think the sooner we have a discussion as a commission about what we're interested in changing, what we would, I think part of that conversation can also be what we think the Charter Revision Board, it would be helpful if they would look at during the next several months following that city commission conference meeting. So, we have time for us to have a discussion, make suggestions to the Charter Revision Board to look into certain topics further, make recommendations, then possibly bring that back to us as a commission to finalize, engage with the public, communicate fully and then ultimately vote on.
All of that, exactly. So, can we do it in October?
October seventh is a potential date.
Great.
Okay.
I think that'd be great, Mayor.
Okay.
The sooner the better.
We did also plan to potentially bring the city hall discussion on that date, so just.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Oh, you mean to, you mean, will staff have been, have, will they have completed their work with regard to the review of the six proposals?
Staff and the city's owner's rep, our intention is to come on October seventh with comparative discussion of each of the six.
All right, so those can be the only two things, because each one of those is going to require a lot of great time. Okay.
So, Mary, does that, how does that sound? That timeline, that process is good with you? Okay.
Just so you know, we do have a meeting tomorrow night.
Perfect.
So, if you want to get on that right now.
If you want to reserve your seat now, great.
Okay.
And it's snacks and it sounds like there's some HR.
About a Costco tomorrow.
Where do you meet, where do you meet now? You used to meet up at the airport, where do you meet now?
Eleventh floor.
Eleventh floor.
Eleven hundred and one, okay. And it sounds like there's some HR topics that I hear that you're, you all feel comfortable engaging in for right now? Is that, okay. Okay, great. So, Mary, yeah, I think that's.
Okay, good.
Sounds great.
Mayor, for the conversation, when was the last Charter revision through ballot, through the election? When was the last time we did that?
Good question. Many years ago. Was it ten years, was it ten years ago, eight years ago?
Not twenty sixteen.
It's when we, it's when we changed the, we changed certain rules regarding donations, we changed the rules. Was it twenty eighteen? Ten years ago.
Three to four years, when we went from three-year terms to four-year terms.
We, that was one of the things, three-year to four-year terms. We changed the amount for donations. We changed the election date. Yeah, those, I think those are the most important topics at the time, yeah.
Twenty seventeen.
And we, and we should revisit those, you know? How does it work? Did, I mean, were they successful? Is that we want to continue? You know, because nothing is, you know, nothing is permanent if we feel that it worked or didn't work. I think the every four years kind of works, it keeps us on a four-year cycle, but we'll, we'll just see what the public has to say. All right, thank you so much.
Mayor, I just want to.
Oh, I'm sorry, just a, Friday, we're interviewing your five city attorney candidates.
Right.
So, we should, the different, change hats.
You know, I understand. I was thinking about that also. Is that going to interfere with this, with the time, timeframe that we've allotted for that? When are we planning to next?
The sixteenth.
September sixteenth.
Which, which day?
September sixteenth.
That's right, the next meeting, that's right, okay.
I suspect that we'll interview them and, and either shortlist them or send them all off to you and that work will be done.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, just one other comment, kind of Raquel and Ashley, in terms of communication plan with the public, I mean, my thinking is, Raquel and Mayor, that we just, we wait until that city conference meeting, October seventh, talk about the topics and so forth and then we can talk about how we would think communication or engagement with the public.
Right, we can do that.
Might be then.
Let's decide which topics we want to move forward and which ones we don't.
Exactly.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Just for clarification, do you want any added promotions to let people know that the commission will be discussing it on that day or?
On October seventh?
Or just wait until afterward?
Any way we can do to promote it? Any way we can do to promote it? I'm, I'm just concerned, you know, how would we do that, other than on the city website and?
We have various avenues, and we could pick and choose the ones that we feel might engage the target audience.
Okay.
I think that's good. It's our city's constitution. I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, I think it's important to let everybody know what's going on. Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I would just like to add that I'm hoping that we also get a chance to go back and look at those documents that we saw over a year ago, when I think Anthony did a great job of putting together all the different topics that had actually been sent to us and compiled by a former city attorney. We, we have a history of documents that, with topics, I want to make sure that we've covered those, or if we still have to cover those. Raquel sent us all an excellent memo summarizing the work of the Charter Revision Board. She sent it on August 27th. I think we need to make sure that we look at that document, and then we compare it to all of those documents that we had in front of us the last time we had that large discussion about whether we were moving forward. And I wanted to also thank the Charter Revision Board. But I also wanted to add, it's not my recollection that we dismissed the work of these volunteers. It's not my recollection that we just let it go. I think, my recollection is that we felt we didn't have the time, and we were too pressured to get it to the ballot. That's the reason we didn't move forward. It was just too compressed a timeframe whereby we would be able to get the word out, educate the public. We have to remember what we did, how very extensive the campaign was when we had the parks bond and the police headquarters coming to the voters. That was a very strategic plan. That was a really well-executed plan in terms of how we went out, and we spoke to the entire city. And we have to make sure that we replicate that effort, so that it is the same energy and the engagement that we were able to do at that time. And I, I believe that that's the reason we did not move forward with all of the work that had been done to that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anthony, did you want to say something?
So just real quick, so we can definitely package that up for the October 7th meeting. The reason for this communication was because they used that to develop their work plan. So that's why they were asking for clarity on whether or not you wanted them to stop or to move forward. So the Charter Review Board did go through those items one by one, with the only two remaining items being strong mayor and then the items from human resources.
Okay, excellent. And I agree with the board's discussion in terms of, we can't just bombard the public with everything all at once. It needs to be done incrementally, and it needs to be done in just the sections that can easily be digested.
And, and remind me, team, on the ballot, I think each topic, each charter topic is listed individually and voted on individually. Is that right? And, or remind me how it works on the ballot.
That's how I understand it, but I would defer to.
That is my understanding of it as well. And I, I did just want to mention that the laws have changed since then, so the way that the city can communicate about referendum items is different than it was before. So I just want to be mindful of that, because I think in the past, we weren't subject to those same laws.
Have they enlarged, have they enlarged the methodologies?
But I'll, I'll allow the city attorney to.
It involves the, the ability to advocate on.
Right, I remember that. We were restricted.
Right. In the past, we could educate voters on that, and that has been restricted in terms of how you can.
Oh, so it's gotten further restrictive?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, but to answer, answer Ben's question, do, are, when it's on the ballot, is it, is different sections? Like, do we have 20 different ways to vote on the ballot?
I'm going to ask Senior Assistant City Attorney Paul Bangal.
Where is Paul? There he is.
Good afternoon. Paul Bangal, City Attorney's Office. There was concern in the past if there was going to be, if there were going to be a lot of questions on the ballot, whether it would be too much. And there is the ability to combine, there are, there's, there is the ability to combine questions. So you can combine some of the questions, you can condense some of the language, and there's a way to do it so that there aren't too many questions.
But we wouldn't want, for example, and to Ben's point, we wouldn't want to put and combine a question regarding, say, strong mayor and parks referendum. We wouldn't want to put, because someone might be in favor of one and not the other. So that would be not appropriate. But keeping subject matter consistency perhaps might be a way to do it. But, but, I mean, we could have as many as 20 different questions being voted on, right?
You could.
It would, it would really gum up the ballot, but is our option.
For one of the Charter Revision Board meetings, I had, I had created a sample just to, just to give them, to give an idea of what kinds of questions they might want to recommend be combined, that sort of thing. Because there was concern that it would be too much.
Well, let's see, let's, why don't we just see what the commission decides should go forward or not go forward, and then we can figure out, you know, how to, how to assign it to the ballot and how to, how to design the ballot. All right?
All right, very good.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Sorry, Ashley.
I just want to make sure that I have clear direction. So prior to the October 7th conference meeting, you'd like for me to do some proactive outreach, letting people know that the charter revisions will be discussed at that meeting, so that.
We could do that, right?
People can.
I'm sorry if you had to repeat. In other words, she's asking if we can enhance the type of advertisement that we normally do for a conference meeting to let people know that this, that this item is going to be on there. But after we decide what's going forward, we are restricted in advocating pro or con on a specific, on a specific issue, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then after that meeting, hopefully I'll have some clear direction on which specific topics you'd like some more education on.
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Mayor, can I have one?
Yes, Paul.
I just wanted to add that there is a 75-word limit per question.
Now you tell us.
Now you tell us. Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Dan?
Yes, more than, more than sufficient answer.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Not the answer you wanted to hear, but. Okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Richard. You can go back to, you were in Bali, right, Richard? You were, you flew in from Bali for this, right? Yeah. Okay, proposed anchoring regulations.
We have Marco Aguilera, our Chief Waterways Officer.
Chief Waterways Officer. Hello, Marco.
Mayor, I just want to start off thanking Marco and the city staff and neighbors. This has been a, as you probably well aware, a long, long involved process for many, many years, and.
We've needed this 20 years.
This is amazing. It's, I'm so excited. It's the day's finally here to keep talking and moving this forward. So thanks, Mayor. Marco, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Marco Aguilera, Chief Waterway Officer. With me up here, I have Assistant City Attorney Bob Dunkel and Marine Facilities Manager Andrew Cuba to hopefully answer any questions that you guys may have.
Mr. Dunkel, don't look so sullen.
So currently, we have three areas in the city that have some anchoring issues. These are Lake Sylvia, the intercoastal waterway north of the La Solas Marina, and Sunrise Bay. These areas often attract vessels that either people live aboard or choose to store their vessels in that area. These vessels often become derelict if they weren't derelict before arriving there. These vessels often will drag anchor and will end up crashing into the abutting property's docks and/or boats, damaging their property. There's been occasions of them sinking. There's been occasions of them catching fire, as well as any illicit discharges from these vessels.
And leaking, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, illicit discharges, dumping of trash, sewage, different issues coming from these vessels. There's even been occasions of, of people throwing animal excrement overboard. And whenever possible, our marine patrol does handle these, these activities. Unfortunately, sometimes it happens while they're not able to witness them. But our marine patrol does as best as they possibly can, and hopefully this ordinance will expand upon that. So House Bill 481 came about this, this year. It allows cities and counties with, or cities within counties of populations 1.5 million or greater to regulate anchoring. The city did have that authority, but it was taken away by the state in 2016. And now they are delegating that authority back to the cities. It does stipulate that there cannot be limits more than 30 days in any six-month period. This does differ from an anchorage limitation area, which is another option that we did explore. Anchorage limitation area is 45 consecutive days in a six-month period. So if that vessel leaves for one day and comes back, his 45 days starts all over again. It's also confined to a small area, a defined area. This ordinance would allow any 30 days, does not have to be consecutive, and it would also be throughout the entire city. And also very important to point out that it is an overnight restriction. So vessels that are coming into our waterways to recreate, to use a sandbar, to do whatever they want to do in our waterways during the day, will be able to, will be able to continue to anchor, and they can anchor there every day. The restriction would be on overnight anchoring. The overnight portion of that would, the actual ordinance reads, "A vessel within the public waterway, within the corporate limits of the city of Fort Lauderdale for a period of one hour or more, between one half hour after sunset and one half hour before sunrise, for more than 30 days in a six-month period." There's a handful of exceptions to that if they're doing permitted marine construction, and/or they're in a anchorage limitation area or a public mooring field. This was brought before a public meeting, June 4th, to discuss potential options, where we discussed the anchorage limitation area versus an ordinance amendment in line with House Bill 481. There was probably 30 or so, 27 people that showed up to the public meeting. We took a show of hands, and everyone in the room agreed that the 30-day is reasonable, including someone who does live on their boat in Lake Sylvia, also concurred that the 30 days is reasonable. This was also brought before the Marine Advisory Board, and it was recommended for approval at a vote of eight to two at the July 8th meeting. And the city of Miami Beach has also enacted an ordinance in line with House Bill 481. So in order for us to not catch all of the vessels that are being pushed out of different municipalities, it's very important for us to also enact this same restriction.
Marco, before you move on, when I was looking over this, with the proposed ordinance, I have, if you can clarify the date, because the meeting you're saying was July 8th, 2025, but in the proposed ordinance is saying July 8th, 2024. So what, when was the meeting?
The meeting was in 2025.
Okay. All right, so we need to make a change in the proposed ordinance.
Proposed resolution, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's 30 days for every six-month period?
Correct.
Not for every year?
Correct. So if someone comes down twice a year, they can stay for 30 days in the first half of the year, and 30 days after six months, they can come back and visit for another 30 days.
Okay.
Enforcement of this would be through Fort Lauderdale Police Department Marine Patrol Unit. They, they already monitor these areas very closely, but this would be a continuation of that already ongoing monitoring. The Marine Patrol Unit will proactively contact all of those vessel owners as they see them arriving in these popular areas or throughout the city, and let them know and educate them of our anchoring ordinance, and kind of come up with a game plan for where they're going to be moving on at the end of these 30 days. Vessels that remain beyond the 30-day period would be cited in accordance with Code Section 1-6. And potential next steps, feedback from the commission today. And if everything goes well, then it is up for, or first reading at the evening meeting tonight.
Mayor, if I may, if we can go back to page five, if you can share with us, how many marine officers do we have assigned, if maybe we need to get the police chief to come over and ask that question?
I, we have Marine Patrol here.
Yes, great.
My goodness, you're laid down with.
Extra 50 pounds.
Bart Jobs and Fort Lauderdale Police Department Marine Unit. Currently, we have six officers on the Marine Patrol. Any other questions?
Yes. How, what is their tour duty, their hours? How does their shift look like?
We do from 7:00 to 5:00 with an additional up to midnight on an M-Leg grant.
Okay. All right. So with those six officers, right now, are six out, or is it like two out?
No, right now, well, on a Wednesday, yeah, all six are on duty right now. Then it goes to the next shift, which, the following days, it's three.
Okay, all right. And then the other question I have, I have a couple more questions. If you could espouse for me how the vehicle owners are notified, how do you contact them?
We have a working knowledge of all the boats coming out of the set anchoragees that Marco mentioned. So we're pretty keen to see a brand-new boat show up. At this point, we approach them and explain to them the 30-day anchoring.
Okay, all right. That could be the owner or the person who's operating?
Yeah, anybody on board at the time.
Okay.
Whether it be the captain, the caretaker, the owner, somebody will be aware, and it will be documented.
Okay. And with the documentation, so you go out, you know, one day you see a boat for five days, you don't see it again, then the boat comes up, another group of officers are working, is it in the computer to say?
Yes, ma'am.
That vessel number, so and so.
We're going to have an Excel spreadsheet with each vessel contact information. So say they do leave five days in, they come back, oh, I left. Nope, your count's still going.
Right.
It's not 30 days yet.
Right.
So.
All right. And is there any type of tagging? I think about, you know, vehicles that are abandoned or left, you know, you orange-tag them through code.
We do have a abandoned boat process, yes, that we do tag the vessels. But that's a little different than the 30-day, as far as that goes.
Okay, yes.
We are, we are working on literature that can be left on a boat in case the boat is unattended at the time of Marine Patrol going to do their inspection. So we'll go with the City Attorney's Office and draft some sort of literature to be able to post on the boat.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a, sort of a general question, and this probably goes to Mr. Dunkel. So why is this coming at a conference meeting instead of just coming forward as a, as an ordinance at the regular meetings? What's, what's our, what's our goal here?
I'm going to have to defer to management. I did not call that. I would have just had this on first reading.
Right.
As you recall, when we had the moratorium ordinance, there was a lot of robust discussion, and we voted it down at that point. I'm not sure why this is on conference.
It is, it is on both agendas. So later this evening, you'll be able to vote on it.
Right.
We just wanted to make sure that we gave enough explanation, since it's a pretty complicated topic.
Okay.
I, I didn't realize it was that complicated. I thought this one is like really straightforward. I know everybody's.
No, it's on the evening agenda.
Okay, thank you so much, folks. We have two people sign up to speak on this. The Count, are you still here? He's not. And Captain Greg Adair? They've been answered. Okay, great. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay. All right, thank you so much, Marco.
Thank you.
And welcome to the team. Okay, moving on to Business 2, Fortify Lauderdale Public Works.
So we have Public Works Director Brad Kane.
Hello, Brad. At the bottom, yeah.
There we go.
Great, thank you.
I'll get used to that. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, fellow Commissioners. My name is Brad Kane, Public Works Director for the city of Fort Lauderdale. I'd like to just open and introduce this item to everybody, as I'm sure everybody's already familiar with. This item for Fort Lauderdale, Fortify Fort Lauderdale Phase 1 previously came to the City Commission, and now today you're going to see Fort Lauderdale Phase 2 Neighborhoods Stormwater Management Improvement Projects. And this is all based on, you know, criteria that previously was discussed and approved previously for by the City Commission. And today, we're going to show you the rankings and be here to answer any questions for discussion. And first, I'd like to introduce Rob Taylor from Hazen and Sawyer. He's our consultant. And I also have Roberto Bentacord, who is our Division Manager from Engineering, who works on all of these projects. Okay, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to get back to you and update you on Fortify Lauderdale. Introduction has been made relative to this project in the Stormwater Management Improvements Phase 2. Our objective here today with Fortify Lauderdale is really to carry on the conversation that we began back in April, where we got together with you, presented a methodology, and received some input from the City Commission. We then went away with that methodology and that feedback, went forth to, to rank the 12 neighborhood projects, and are here today to present that ranking to you based upon the quantitative analysis that has been prepared. And then we can have some discussion, if we want to, relative to how we may want to entertain some further qualitative criteria in developing those rankings.
Back to your, before you get to the rankings, if we can go to page 5, the eight neighborhoods, what's happening with, where are we with Melrose Manor and Rivlin there?
Sure. So if we go down the, the rank, the, the eight original neighborhoods, actually it was seven plus one, if everybody remembers background, we started with seven, we added Melrose Manor. The Durs neighborhood is substantially complete. Dorsey Riverbend is well underway. I think we are targeted for substantial completion there before the end of the year.
Okay.
Progressive Village, we're about 60% done. We expect substantial completion on that job to be probably this time next year. We just received bids on Victoria Park that has not been awarded yet but is coming down the, down the pipe. Southeast Styles is under design and Melrose Manners, as I understand it, that one's not being done under our contract, is very near completion with design. Roberto may have some better information about when that one is planned to begin.
So still in design and bids have not gone out yet?
No, not, not for either of the last two.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll jump right from there into, into Phase Two. So Phase Two was intended certainly to follow up with another seven to eight neighborhoods initially, based upon the unprecedented storm event of April 2023, other events, flooding events that had preceded that and more flooding in the summer of 2024. We saw that number of neighborhoods grow significantly to over 17, lots of pieces of adjacent neighborhoods. You can see them here, they're grouped together in 12 distinct projects and listed here alphabetically. This is not the rank order yet, this is just them in alphabetical order. And you can kind of see spatially how they cover the city on the graphic on the right-hand side of the slide. So when we got together with you in April, we had a conversation or began a conversation, if you will, relative to an analytical approach for prioritizing these projects. And it was based upon putting together a project score that we would use to rank each project. And that project score is really comprised of two main components. The first, a model-driven level-of-service score. And second, a neighborhood feedback score. We had a bit of a discussion at that time relative to the weighting factors that would be applied to these two components. And we decided that we would, the level-of-service score would be weighted at 75%, the neighborhood feedback at 25%. Within that level-of-service score, there are two primary components that comprise it. One has to do with flooded structures within the neighborhood, the other has to do with flooded roadways within the neighborhood. And there again, we talked about how we would weight them relatively and we decided that the flooded structures would be weighted a little more heavily, 60%, and the, and the roadways a little lighter at 40%. And then the last piece of the weighting has to do with the neighborhood feedback score. Again, two pieces to this one. One, information and feedback that came directly from our residents and neighbors. The other piece, FEMA repetitive loss information. And here, again, based on discussion we had in April, we decided to weight that information from FEMA a little more heavily than, than the neighborhood feedback score, 60%, 40%. And then this graphic just really captures all of that together. You can see the two components of the overall project score, the components that derive the level-of-service score and the two pieces to the neighborhood feedback score and all of their respective weighting factors. And so, using that, we did, again, this is purely a quantitative analysis. This is from top to bottom, the 12 neighborhood projects, remembering that some projects include more than one neighborhood or parts of more than one neighborhood. And so you can see the, the project scores here, you can see the rankings top to bottom. A few things that I would point out, if you look at the scores in the, in the purple-shaded column, you'll see that the first three projects, they separate themselves fairly reasonably from the rest of the pack. And you see something similar happening towards the, the, the last three or four projects. In the middle, projects four to eight in particular, very tightly grouped. There's not a lot of difference between these projects. You know, you could look at things in various different ways and it might move these things up one, down one. So just wanted to bring that to your, to your attention. You can see here too that the Commission District or districts, some of them again cross district lines, you know, where they, where they are all located. So I mentioned the application of potential qualitative criteria, again, especially when we're talking about those very tightly grouped projects in that four to eight, four to nine range. You may want to take into consideration some other factors as you talk about how they might be ordered in the, in terms of the, the order of the work. Some of the things that we looked at that you might consider here, what's the spatial distribution of investment? Are there cumulative construction impacts if we try to aggregate too much work in too small or constrained of an area at a given time? And then certainly the project size and construction cost and how we want to try to maybe balance spending out over the life of the implementation of this program.
Were you able to do any kind of exercise that would show how the rankings might differ if you looked at qualitative criteria as opposed to just quantitative factors?
We did, we did not look at how they might shift based upon qualitative criteria. There are, we could certainly do that. I think what we would want to do, first of all, there is probably to have a discussion about what qualitative criteria we would want to apply because there are any number of items and, and we could put different weights to those qualitative criteria the same way we put different weights to the various components of the quantitative criteria. We had considered more that this would be maybe something through discussion or even as you are, you know, as the, the program is playing itself out, things that might happen in a given neighborhood that might make you decide that it would be better to proceed more quickly or maybe to delay a project in a neighborhood, that you might take those things into consideration as you try to figure out that, that very precise ordering of the, of the 12 projects.
Because I think that would be helpful just to see what that would look like, at least using those four criteria that you have listed under the qualitative. Also, just to see, I know that you mentioned this briefly, but there are some of these projects in this next tranche that parts of one might be incorporated in another because of proximity, things like that, you know? That would be helpful to know, I think, also.
Okay. We can do that and maybe what the best thing for us to do would be to share some information with Public Works Department as to how we would recommend to use those, those qualitative criteria, get some buy-in from them, and then we could apply them and see how that may or may not affect the ordering of projects.
Thank you.
Costs, so we talked about project size, project cost. We did want to take this opportunity to give you an update on Phase One and Phase Two project costs. You know, we've seen a number of things happen here. One, as we mentioned, the Phase Two, the size of the project, the number of neighborhoods has grown significantly. And we have since the beginning of Phase One seen significant escalation in construction cost. So these numbers factor both of those in. So we now see Phase One projects, you know, probably tipping at about $450 million or so. The Phase Two projects, again, this is inclusive of design permitting, construction management, construction contingencies, are tipping the scale at, at over a billion with a combined cost now of over a billion and a half dollars for both Phases One and Two. Talking about that qualitative criteria regarding proximity of projects and, you know, do we create a situation if we have too much construction going on in a given area? This gives you, again, kind of a spatial representation of where those projects are numbered by their rank. So you can kind of see where projects adjacent to one another might be happening either concurrently or on the heels one to the other. And we can talk about how there may be some advantage to maybe having a little bit of separation time-wise between some of those.
So, all right, speaking in terms of time-wise, what kind of timeframe? 1.6 billion's a lot of money. Are we talking over five years, 10 years, 20 years? What, what kind of timing are we looking at?
I think that's going to depend a, a lot upon funding availability. I, I asked if Assistant Senate Manager Matthews would, would talk a little bit about that because I think that's important. And I think you're looking at generally probably around 10 years. But again, if more funding is available sooner, that timeframe can be shrunken a little bit.
Are any of these projects part of the consent decree that was, no, they're not part of the dissent decree? So this is in addition to the consent decree.
Completely separate.
Requirements, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
And so then the last piece of information that I have to provide some context for you really shares, again, the ranking, the, the Commission Districts that the projects sit within, their individual project cost and then their cumulative project cost so that you can kind of see how the spending builds as we move forward through the, through the 12. Just a few things here to note as well. I, I, we had a discussion last time, we talked about some work over on Bayview. One of the things that is clear is that there's not a huge amount of work in this program in, in Commission District One. We did talk about doing some work drainage-wise on Bayview that needs to take place. We've, we've essentially at this point in time lumped that work in with the Point Seto Heights Project, which is a District One project. You could certainly break that out whenever and wherever you wanted to. It's not, it's not physically contiguous to the Point Seto Heights Project. The other thing that I, I would point out is that if you look at the bottom of the list, so happens the three least expensive projects are down at the bottom. When you think about it, that probably isn't terribly surprising. Those are the, the projects that have the least severe issues, takes a little less probably to resolve those issues, but they are there at the bottom. And so when you do think about how this cost spreads out over time, you may want to think about, and then, you know, Commissioner Glassman, this is a place where we could look at how that qualitative criteria of cost might, you might want to pepper those into the, the ranks somewhere else, just from the standpoint of how funding and financing this whole thing And with that, glad to take whatever questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions of these gentlemen?
Just one. So help me go back to the earlier slide with tranche one. I, I believe that bids closed in July for Victoria Park. Why are we falling behind on that schedule? Or do we know when that's going to get moving? It's been a while, I know since it's been in the works, but I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, did not the bid close in July?
I think Roberto, I think it's getting some funding in order, but I think Roberto can answer that.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission. Roberto Bentacort, Stormwater Division Manager. So we need, we need it to be accepted for an award. So really we're waiting for the commission to come back in session. So we already have the paperwork, paperwork out there. We should be coming on an upcoming commission meeting so that we can approve the award.
Okay, so we're almost ready to go?
Yeah, we're ready to go.
All right, cool. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Does one person just sign up to, oh, sorry Ben, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Raquel, question for you. So, thank you, thank you all for the presentation. So we need to move faster, I think, Raquel. So when we talk about 10 years, 12 years to do this, I, I think we have to move faster. So are there options that you've in the past have used for stormwater projects? I'm thinking P3s unsolicited, what, what, just dream big dreams. What are possibilities to expedite?
From my past experience, I think Fort Lauderdale is on track right now, exercising the option that we're using, partnering with Hazen and Sawyer and others to execute these projects. I think, as was mentioned before, it's a matter of funding primarily and we want to make sure that, number one, we're not ripping up the entire city all at one time because I don't think that we'd be able to handle it or our neighbors would be able to handle it. We also don't want to overextend ourselves and borrow more money than we need all at one time. So we do have a staggered approach that we're looking at for every three years to inject more funding into Fortify Lauderdale. I do think there are opportunities, whether it's through a P3. I have had some conversations with entities that might be interested in that approach. I do not feel that we should be overly dependent on the P3 model for infrastructure improvements for stormwater, but I do think it could be part of our overall approach. But I definitely would not recommend using a P3 approach for the entirety of our stormwater program because I think we could face some challenges should the relationship not meet the expectation. So I just want to say that what we're doing right now, I think we have a lot of benefits there. We have a great relationship. I think our program is moving along largely as planned, but I think in our next phase, it's really more about funding. And so we're looking at roughly $330 million, then in the next three years, $350 million, then three years after that, another $350 million to get these projects off the ground and completed.
Okay, great. So you see bond funding to continue to be the primary driver. Is that right? Okay, great. And the current model continuing in that vein with the possible addition, if I heard you right, to a P3 possibility?
I, I think to some extent, not a large extent of our program, maybe a 10%, 20% portion of our program could benefit if we wanted to explore that a little further. But I don't think the entirety of our stormwater program or even a majority of our stormwater program should be under the P3 model.
Well, even if, even if it were, even if we did get outside people to build some of this, it's still going to have to be paid for by bonds. I mean, I don't, is there any other, and that's how we've done it anyway. So whether we build it or someone else builds it, I mean, we still have to pay for it by a bond issue. So it's a lot of money to borrow. It's unfortunate that the City of Fort Lauderdale, since its inception, has ignored, you know, the issue of stormwater drainage and other kinds of infrastructure. Trying to make up for the mistakes of the past in, you know, in a short period of time can be burdensome. So, you know, something to think about because it's just going to raise everyone's tax bill. So, anyway.
In addition, I'd like to add that the newly proposed capital projects department would be responsible for a lot of the future capital projects of this nature and be working with consultants. And so I'm looking for this department to grow. There, there'll be a Phase Two, as was discussed at the joint workshop with the Budget Advisory Board, whereas some of our project management functions in Public Works would be transitioning to capital projects. And I really want to invest in the success of that department and seeing how we can advance many of our stormwater projects.
Well, but also to Ben's point, you know, the longer, you'll see the little footnote here, planning level projected costs in 2025 dollars. So the longer we wait, the more these are going to cost. So it's a trade-off, I agree.
Right, right. And Mayor, that's, that's what I'm most interested in is maximizing the scale and efficiency as much as possible because every day that passes that we don't have the infrastructure we need is a risk to our residents in, in that area. And so.
You're right.
That's, that's where I just, I, I don't want to take our eyes off the prize and focus of that and exploring, Raquel, like every way possible to, to continue to expedite. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We have a couple people sign up to speak, James Labrie, followed by Ted and Sarah.
You're on. Thank you. Mayor Trentalis, Vice Mayor Herbs, Commissioners Beasley, Pittman, Glassman, and Sorensen. My name is James Labrie and I am a, have been a resident of Point Seto Heights neighborhood for nearly 23, 23 years. I currently serve as the Vice President of the Point Seto Heights Civic Association. And I'm here this afternoon speaking as a representative of the association. For clarification, within this scheme of this project, Point Seto Heights was combined with the Lakewood neighborhood. So when I say Point Seto Heights, I'm speaking of the project, but I do not represent or I'm not speaking for Lakewood at all. with the Lakewood neighborhood. So when I say Point Setta Heights, I'm speaking of the project, but I do not represent or I'm not speaking for Lakewood at all. Needless to say, we.
Michael Aldego would be happy to hear that.
I thought he might be here. Needless to say, in Point Setta Heights, we are disappointed that we did not make it into the first group of four projects. And we would like to remind this commission that the residents of Point Setta Heights have been in documented discussion with the Public Works Department regarding problems with stormwater drainage since the spring of 2021, when Raj Verma was the Director of the Department. Our flooding issues were already known when the Fortify Fort Lauderdale project was initiated. We've been waiting for several years. And Mayor, you've brought this up, and so has Commissioner Sorensen. What's missing from today's presentation is a timeline. On October 1st of 2024, a presentation was made to the City Commission that described the 12 projects and timeline that started in 2025 and went to 2034. This timeline showed that the first group of four projects starting in 2025 and continued through 2030. The second group of four projects started in 2027 and continued through 2030, excuse me, the second group started, project started in 2027 and continued through 2032, and the third group of four projects started in 2029, continued through 2034. Point Setta Heights Civic Association would like to know if the city is still committed to this timeline. I'm glad to hear there's some interest in moving it up. And if it is, will the Point Setta Heights project, ranked as number five, be the first neighborhood to see work begin among the other three projects that are scheduled in the 2027 to 2032 timeline? And I also might want to add that I like the idea that we've brought up some of these qualitative factors, and one of them was the project cost. And as you've been speaking to it, the second group of four projects have the highest combined cost of any of the others. So maybe that needs to be looked at, and those can be spread around in some way so that it's not such a huge amount right there. So that's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. and Sarah.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ted and Sarah, President of the River Oaks Civic Association. I've been a resident of River Oaks for 60-plus years. I would just like to remind, well, I lived right through this, not only through the flood, but through the construction, because we were one of the first neighborhoods to get it. So, and I, as, this gentleman, as you remember, I probably went around to every neighborhood presentation that they gave, no matter what district or where the neighborhood was. I attended most of these meetings, just to let the people know what they were in for, because we went through it. I would just like to remind, when they're awarding these contracts to these companies, that we had Rickman Construction in our neighborhood, and they ended up being fined $100,000 for environmental violations. So I just, I just want to make sure, whatever entity is awarding these contracts, to make sure you remember, because River Oaks is still dealing with what they did to our neighborhood during this construction. I mean, thank, thank a lot of things that we've never had to yet test these, you know, this system, but I know it is coming. That's, that's no doubt. Now, the one thing I didn't really understand was this LOS score. I don't understand why neighborhood feedback is on there. I mean, that's almost, to me, making it like a popularity contest as far as the neighborhood goes. To me, it should be much more on the flooding of structures, the flooding of roads, and the potential future floodings, not on which neighborhood can bang the drum the loudest, even though I was probably banging the drum the loudest for River Oaks.
Yeah, you should all, you should talk about people.
I know, I know that. But, you know, I just don't want it to see in a popularity contest, and suddenly these neighborhoods.
I don't think it's meant to be that way. I think it's meant for information gathering, going out to the community, because we can't be all eyes and ears on every street corner. It's important that we get feedback from the community members, people who live in houses, to tell us what the conditions are under storm situation. I think that's what it's intended for.
Okay, that's good. I want to see that instead of just, you know. And just off topic, I'm sorry, I got to go off topic. As far as the charter review.
I wouldn't want to cut you off, because I hate to see you slam me on Facebook.
You might hate to see it, but I love to do it.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
All right, time's up.
I mean, but if you, the charter review meetings, if you want to get the people there, do what we do in River Oaks, feed them, and they will come. I mean, not just snacks, but we put out a whole buffet. So that is my recommendation.
It's great. Wings, wing night?
Wing night, we had a contest for wings. We're getting 80 people meeting in River Oaks.
Make it happen.
So, but that is it. I just, just remember what Rickman did, and just let's go more on the qualit, I can't pronounce these words, the ones where it's more impacted than the one where there's more cheerleading going on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just in time, wow. How do we manage that? All right, any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay, there being none, let us continue on business three. This is Fort Lauderdale Police Department Headquarters Phase Two Building Structural Design Peer Review Presentation. Who's going to be here? Mr. Farhado.
So, good afternoon again. Anthony Farhado, Director of Development Services. So, want to give you an update of what has been accomplished over the summer while you were on break. We'll be doing a summary of the Phase Two.
I don't like the word "break." In connection with the police department, but go ahead.
Maybe I'll change my word next time. And an update on Phase Two.
You can say recess, recess. Summer recess.
Summer recess, okay, thank you. So an update and summary on Phase Two peer review during the summer recess.
Yes.
As well as an update on Phase One, and then, of course, answer any questions you may have. With us today, we have representatives from AECOM and TT, the Architect and Engineer of Record. We also have Brent Chancellor from WJE, who is performing the peer review with us. So, it's kind of complicated, but I'm going to try and work through it. There was a lot of work that was done over the recess. So we, if you remember, we had 16 items broken down into three topics, right? Life safety, serviceability, and documentation. Under life safety, there were eight items. One is still under review, and I'll get into more details in the actual update. Two items are conceptually resolved pending additional information, and then all the other items, which are five, are fully resolved. Serviceability, we have one item resolved pending additional information, as well as an item pending resolution to Item 1 and 15, which I'll get into more detail, because some of these items are interconnected. And then one item is fully resolved. And then under documentation, there were five items. One item still under review, resolution pending product testing and alternative structural enhancements. One item would be resolved if Items 1 and Item 15 in documentation are resolved, and then three are fully resolved. So, as you can see on the graphic on the right, we split it up between Phase One and Phase Two we're being done. So we're going to focus on Phase Two for the time being. So as you can see, I'm going to start at Item 3, because that one's resolved. So that one's an easy one. Foundation capacity at the columns, they've been able to figure that out. Item 4, the slide bearing capacity, they've been able to figure that out as well. There's some permitting and installation needs to be done of additional material in that area. Number 5, structural integrity has been resolved. Number 6, the column.
Anthony, just sorry to interrupt, but when you say resolved, if you could add a little bit more there, like, resolved by improving the structural integrity through mitigation, or evaluated that what was there sufficient, just.
Yeah, so just to let you know, we do intend, at the end of all this, that there will be a full report that will summarize everything and explain everything in more detail. A lot of the documentation that was given back and forth. So we had the preliminary transfer of information from AECOM and TT to WJE. That generated the original summary report, right? The draft report. That also generated additional questions, so more material, more data, more clarity on those items. A lot of these things were able to be resolved through some understanding of how it was designed and how it was put together. If there's a more technical response needed, WJE is definitely here and can get into that in more detail. But I believe on that one, Brent, that was one of those situations where you got the additional detail that you needed. We don't have any structural improvements that are anticipated with that. That's just more of a correction on some documentation, as well as that clarification of what those questions generated.
Great, yeah. And so my question at the end of this slide will be, all that has been resolved, has it been, has a resolution been achieved through improved information sharing, analysis, data collection, or through actual structural improvement of work?
All of it, except for one, which is the slide bearing capacity. So for that, there's actually two beams. The connection points between the buildings. It's one building, but there's two portions that act independently of each other, where the community center is and where the main building is.
Yep.
So that needs to be able to move independently. The slide bearing that was installed wasn't the correct size, and so they need to put in additional slide bearing that'll increase the area that it is supporting on those two beams. And so that will be an actual physical enhancement.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful for that slide.
And number six, that will be dependent on Items 7 and 8, which are currently being submitted to DSD for review. So there was an ability, under the Florida Building Code, as I understand it, to submit for an alternative in some aspects, and so the Building Department is currently reviewing those. They've, I had a conversation this morning with our Chief Structural Plans Examiner, and he's got some feedback for AECOM and TT, so we're going to be setting up a phone call. This is news to them, they're probably hearing it for the first time. But that conversation did just happen a couple of hours ago, to kind of clarify some of the submittals that we've received so far. And then going back to Items 1 and 2. So 1 is one of the big-ticket items, 1 and 15. You'll see that in documentation. So 1 is the masonry walls. This has to do with the lateral loads of the building. If number 1 can be corrected, then Item 2 would be resolved. You don't need to do it. And I'll get into more detail on Item 15 when we get to that slide.
And Item 1 could possibly be resolved for information, through information and data, or through physical?
At this point, we anticipate that the resolution there is going to be an instructional enhancement. Which type of structural enhancement we do may depend on some testing, which I'll get into in just a minute. But one of the, one of the, one of the methods to correct that would be to install additional connecting points between that, those partially grounded masonry walls and the floors of the building, to structurally connect them the way WJE feels they should be connected, to meet the calculations that they feel are relevant to the building performing the way it needed to for a Cat 5-type structure.
Great.
If we do testing of the current connection points, it may not result in a structural enhancement. So basically, what that means is TT has designed the building to perform a certain way based on the connections in the partially grounded masonry wall that's there. However, WJE feels that more testing would need to be done on those connection points to show that they can meet those load requirements. TT stands behind that. The question then becomes, which path do we follow, and which is the more prudent one to ensure that the building functions the way we need it to? Under serviceability?
Did that answer your question, Ben?
Yes, thanks, Mayor.
Okay.
Yep.
Hopefully, I didn't make it more confusing.
No, no, okay, yeah. I was just out there with the team mayor, checking out the headquarters, so I wanted to get, kind of dig in a little bit on this, thanks.
I mean, because the, number one, the sheer wall is the most fundamental aspect of this project, as we had required that it be able to withstand a Category 5 hurricane, right? And, and, you know, just moving some numbers around on a piece of paper to make it look good is not the solution. And, you know, this is, this is serious stuff.
Yes.
So here we are, still talking about if it can be resolved, and here we are, you know, this, all this has been discovered, you know, months ago, and what's the path to correcting this? Are we, has it been redesigned? Has it, is there a path to correcting it? What's, I'm not quite sure I fully understand your response to Commissioner Sorensen.
Brent, can you help me with this?
I mean, when a hurricane comes here, I'm running to the police department, so tell me why I should.
So this is Brent Chancellor, WJE. So there's two paths here. We identified a situation. The design team feels that they can use the masonry sheer walls inside the building as part of the lateral system. And part of this back and forth has been a review of that, and they have presented their case as to why those can be used, and we've gone through that documentation. The one part that remains that we have not been able to resolve is the connection between the top of those walls and the floor above. And that's what Anthony's speaking about with regards to, do we fix that? Can we do some testing to show that the connection that is there has sufficient capacity? And if the lab data tells us yes it does, then maybe nothing has to be done? Or the third option is what we put in Item 1, which is just add a sheer wall to the building that we know the capacity of. The design team would like to demonstrate that they can achieve that through these masonry walls, and that's what we're trying to resolve.
So what triggered the inquiry to begin with, then?
Inquiry as to.
As to the capacity. Why is this even an issue, if there wasn't some concern that you guys had uncovered in the process of examining the current structure?
So the way, the design drawings, the permitted design drawings that were given to us to do our evaluation.
Right.
Identified certain walls within the building as sheer walls, or the lateral system of the building.
Right.
These masonry walls were not part of that system, and so we have excluded that from our analysis, and that's relatively typical. The design team has come back and said, look, it was our intent to include these walls as part of the lateral system, and we said, okay, that, that is an approach forward, provide us the information that we can review, and that we can go through point by point and determine if we can come to an agreement that these are acceptable. That is the process that is still ongoing, and that we're approaching and getting closer to a resolution on.
Okay.
Mayor.
All right, we'll see what this, we'll see what the answer is. Yes.
My question, sheer wall versus what? Because I'm hearing sheer wall and a construction connector.
Yeah, can you define, define to us what a sheer wall is?
I know what the sheer wall is.
Oh, okay.
What is the alternative construction connector that we're putting in place, challenging testing, versus what?
So, so, want to break this apart into two items. So there's reinforced concrete sheer walls that are in that building, and there is also reinforced masonry walls that are in that building. And the design team would like to include those masonry walls as part of the sheer walls and lateral system of the building. But we need to make sure that those masonry walls are properly connected to the rest of the structure. And resolving that connection and getting to a design value that we can say, yes, we can be very confident in what the capacity is of this connection, so that we can include it as part of the lateral system, is what we're trying to resolve. And that is where we're looking at what's existing, and coming up with a test where we can develop a design value that says we're confident in what that is. Or alternatively, we can add in a different connection that is pre-qualified, that the codes already have blessed, so to speak, in terms of their evaluation process, and we can use that instead to come to a resolution as to going ahead and using those walls.
Could you tell us what those connectors are? What is that product?
So those connections would be a series of angles on either side at the top of the wall, steel angles, and some connectors through the wall, and some connectors up into the slab above. And those connections would have to be pre-qualified connections, connections that have been previously tested and shown what their capacity is. And that usually comes as an off-the-shelf product. There's companies out there who do a whole lot of testing of their products so that they can sell into the market, and they have, and that's what that pre-qualification process is.
Okay. What I'm trying to get to, what is going to hold this in place? You're telling me it's a angle steel piece that'll be connected to the masonry wall, correct?
From the concrete slab, horizontal slab, to a vertical wall, yes.
Right, okay. Now, when it comes to the safety of that, because when we started this conversation, the sheer wall was the product, correct?
Correct, the reinforced concrete sheer wall.
It was the suggested method to use and go in. And now we're hearing about some angles, steel angles to, in a sense, lock them in place, and some additional testing. What does this testing look like timewise and all of this?
Timewise, I'm not sure. It's likely several months' worth of work. I don't know the exact timeframe, but it's likely that, because you have to cast samples in a laboratory, they have to wait a certain amount of time to cure, and then you can test them. And so that, that process takes kind of a defined period of time. And so I don't know what that is, in terms of retrofit and going back in and establishing a different type of connection that's pre-qualified, that could be done relatively rapidly. Now, there are some issues related to that, since the finish is already in place, but that is, in terms of timeline, the direction that the two of those could go. And we don't know what the result of that testing. And, and so I don't know what that is in terms of retrofit and going back in and establishing a different type of connection that's pre-qualified, that could be done relatively rapidly. Now, there are some issues related to that, since the finish is already in place, but that, that is in terms of timeline, the, the direction that the two of those could go. And, and we don't know what the result of that testing will be. The, the goal of the testing is to demonstrate that what is currently in place is sufficient to justify the use of those walls.
How did the conversation come up to go in this additional direction? Because I'm, I'm, you know, the life safety, of course, is very important to all of us. And when we had the last presentation, that sheer wall component, for me, was like, okay, this is the direction we're going in, this is the top-tier direction to go in. And when I hear, and the angle stills, being familiar a little bit with lock-in brackets, I hear of a L bracket, I see it as a Band-Aid, in my opinion.
Sure.
You know, it has strength, but when you told me and explained to me that the sheer wall would be a great safety method for our community and for the structure, I don't understand how do we get to a product that is what appears to be at a lawyer, a lower tier of safety?
So I, I would not call it a lower tier of safety. No matter what solution we put in and what resolution has come to, the safety of that structure has to meet the safety requirements that are in the building code, which are very stringent. And so whatever method is used, we cannot, it's not that we're going to short-change the safety of the building, it's just a, a matter of the method. Now, in our report, we had two items. We had item one, which was the sheer wall method, and we had item 15, which we put into documentation, because at that time, we didn't think that it could be justified on the basis of the information we had, that that was a solution, but we left the option open for the design team, that if they wanted to come back and tell us and provide a whole lot more information about that system, that they had the opportunity to do so, and that is the path that they have chosen to do, is to try to justify through additional documentation, calculations, analysis, et cetera, that that system that they prefer is acceptable, and we're going down that path with them and making sure that we achieve resolution on all these items underneath that. Currently, what is remaining is the connection at the top of the wall. And so, and so that's how we got to that point.
Any further questions? We're good for now? Okay, please continue.
So, excuse me, that brings us to the category of serviceability. We have number nine, community room and lobby area resolved pending additional information, and then the building period, which is the movement of the building, can be resolved when items one and 15 are resolved, which was the explanation Brent was just giving. So as you can see, some of these items are interconnected just because of the structural connections and how these systems are working with each other. Cover depth was resolved, that was also resolved through a correction to the documentation. And then in documentation, we resolved the column schedule, the load calculations, the mechanical equipment loads, these were all corrections to existing documentation or clarification on the data that was provided. The masonry walls, this is the item 15 that we were referring to as you fix number one or number 15, it resolves both of them and corrects a couple of other items on, in the list, and then the column flexual stiffness modifiers will be resolved when items one and 15 are resolved. I'm getting it now into phase one. Did you have any other questions about phase two right now? Nope, okay. So this is just to show that remediation work on the deflection, which was really what was the catalyst of this entire peer review, is almost complete. Everything has been done, the, with the exception of the fiber reinforced polymer, that has been started. It will take about a month for that to be installed into the columns, and that is on the third floor. I do have a graphic showing you where that is, but basically, they've started that with the vendor and with the application and the cure times, it takes about 30 days. And then I just left a note in there that we are still working with AECOM on a draft amendment to the agreement so that we can recognize what we're doing in this and, and AECOM's commitments to the city. This is the graphic showing where the, the fiber reinforcement would go on the third floor, and then that will complete all the deflection-related items in that area of the building. And with that, that concludes my presentation. We can take any other questions that you have.
Okay, anyone else have any questions with regard to this item? There being none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
Mark Dickerman.
Commissioners, Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. Mark Dickerman, citizen, community activist. First of all, I, when I, Dean, when I said I could walk to the, the, the police station, I can. I'm enjoying from my front row view as the building is going up. Driving around, it looks great what they're doing on the outside, they got all the plantings done, they got the security fencing up. I'm glad the chief's not going to have to worry about his ceiling falling in on him. But there is a concern, my neighbors have a concern, with when you take down the west portion of the buildings, that the asbestos may get into the air, may affect breathing and may contaminate some of the pollutants, that, that the asbestos may contaminate some of my neighbors, so.
You're talking about the demolition of the old building?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I would hope that there would be a protocol in place that any, any airborne debris that would emanate from that process would be part of a program that would have been approved in advance so that no one is affected adversely by the destruction of that building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, do we have a timeline for that demolition?
Anthony? Where did Anthony go? Anthony, do we have a timeline with regard to the demolition of the old building? I mean, why can't we do it now?
Demolition of the original, Anthony Verhado, demolition of the original building is dependent on a couple of items. We have to abate it for asbestos, and then we also have to relocate equipment out of the building into the temporary radio shelter next to the existing tower. So Ron Stein is our project manager, he can give you the details on what the time is.
Mr. Stein?
Thank you, everyone. Ron Stein, city staff. We had a pre-construction meeting for abatement this week. We should be starting within the next two weeks. It'll take about a month to abate the building. Our goal is to try to have the radio equipment removed by then. If that does not happen, it'll be three weeks out, and then that, once the radio equipment has been moved to the temporary shelter, the demolition will start, and that process is roughly 60 days.
There we go. Answer your question, Mr. Dickerman?
We will provide more communications as the time gets closer, so you're clear on the exact date of demolition prior to.
Okay.
And city manager, we're going to check for pigeons, right?
We will check for all wildlife.
Thank you. No, I'm serious, there's an issue with one of the buildings that got demolished on the beach, that Marina, Marina Mar, or whatever that dry dock storage place was?
Right.
By the Oakland Park Bridge?
Right.
And when that building-
There were pigeons in there?
When that building was demolished, the whole neighborhood has been, become infested with pigeons, just landing on the, on, on all of the condos and all of the roofs and all of the people's balconies on the top floors, and it's been kind of messy, so I'm hoping that we're able to, I'm serious when I say I hope we check for pigeons. Thank you.
Anthony, who's here for AECOM?
We have Tim Blair and Unique Vigaro.
Okay, great. Can, can one of y'all come up, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tim Blair with AECOM.
Hey, thanks, thanks for being here, Tim, appreciate it. Just want to get your take, how's it going from your perspective? Love to hear that, and then also would love an update on how it's going in terms of discussions with the city on memorializing kind of accountability, future, all, all that that you've been working on.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Happy, happy to give that update, and Brent, appreciate your presentation. It's been a collaborative effort, and, and I'd like to reinforce what Brent was saying. We're not compromising the structural integrity of this facility in any way possible. We're confirming, justifying that it meets and exceeds the criteria, and that's where the collaboration between WJE and Thornton Thomasetti has been. So, I mean, essentially, if I may, we're really down to this one issue, because once we resolve this, as Anthony mentioned, it resolves other multiple issues. So our goal is to reach consensus and conclusion so that we move forward with completing the building, occupying the building, abating, demolishing, and completing the project. So I think, and Raquel, you brought this up in our last meeting. Last week, our surveyor, Thornton Thomasetti, set the benchmarks for the surveys. So now that the phase one remediation is done, we've established the benchmarks, which will be the quarterly surveys that we do.
Great.
Which will monitor the creep deflection. So that process has started. We've been communicating with Rhonda. There's a meeting set up later this week to continue those discussions in terms of financial resolution.
Great. How do you think those, in terms of financial resolution, is that coming along well so far? How are we feeling?
Rhonda gave us the initial assumptions from the city.
Great.
We provided additional feedback.
Yep.
So now I think it's just-
Okay, rolling, and working. And Rhonda, so Rhonda, he's talking about Rhonda Hassan from the, okay, great. Is Rhonda here, here, her? Okay, I don't think she's here either. Dwayne, are you privy to the, the discussions?
We, we are in discussions with their council. Slight different take on the correspondence. We have sent information to council with regards to some issues, and the last correspondence we received was that, you know, they were waiting for this meeting to see if they can get closer to a finalization on certain matters. I'm not aware that any further meeting has been scheduled, but we're continuing to dialogue.
Okay, great, okay, that's-
So I think the intent is that that would happen. After this commission meeting is Don and Rhonda will get together and start working through the details.
Great, that'd be excellent. Give me the length of time that you would be providing for that quarterly assessment of the structural.
So, so what we've agreed to is it would be over a 57-month period. So it would be 19 quarterly visits.
Yep.
And then we have 10 annual inspections after that.
Great.
And so that's, I think, the consensus that we've come to with feedback from the mayor, the commissioners.
Fantastic.
Working with the city manager.
Great, that sounds great. Question asked him, could you, would you be willing to come back in, let's say, a month from now, just to check in? How are things going? Updates, something like that?
I'm always available.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great. So Raquel, can we schedule that? Just, it doesn't have to be a, a full presentation that Anthony gave, but just with Tim and Anthony, just kind of checking in briefly, how it's going with Rhonda, whoever else?
Sure, and we can also provide more immediate updates via memorandum.
Yeah, that'd be great, but I'd like to have a face-to-face get-together, if we could, just briefly, please?
We can do it.
If that's all right, Mayor, is that all right, just a? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, thanks, Anthony.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, there being none. Business four, infrastructure special obligation bond presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Yvette Matthews, Acting Assistant City Manager. So in preparation for the item on this evening's agenda, city staff wanted to provide an update on the infrastructure investment special obligation bond. So this $105 million special obligation bond will include three main components. The first relates to the police headquarters. So back in May of 2023, the commission approved issuing $45.5 million in short-term financing to cover the additional costs associated with the police headquarters. This bond will convert that short-term financing into a long-term bond. The remaining $59.5 million will be used for various infrastructure improvements, including public safety communication equipment as well as general infrastructure, infrastructure improvements. And today's presentation will primarily focus on the sidewalk, sidewalks and roadway improvements. So in November of 2024, the commission received a memo that outlined the condition assessment for our roadways and sidewalks across the city. As city staff began preparing the five-year CIP for these projects, it quickly became evident that we were going to have to take a big action if we were a, wanted to make a monumental impact on the things that were the highest priority needs in that report. So in January, the commission at your goal-setting session provided staff with direction to jumpstart the needed infrastructure improvements through the use of a bond, and in March, we began that process by hiring bond counsel. So as we look at the goals of this initiative, the primary goals are really to address the serious and failed roadways and sidewalks across our city while using existing sidewalk and roadway maintenance funding to offset the debt service. It will also provide a pool of funding to address district-specific roadway and sidewalk projects. So in terms of dollars, for roadways, this means $16.1 million invested in our roadways. This addresses all of the very poor, serious and failed roadways across the city, which is about 10.1 miles of roadways. Understanding that there are also unique needs in each district, there is $2 million dedicated to the roadway improvements projects in each district. As we look at sidewalks, it's $11.8 million investment in sidewalks. This is 13.3 linear miles, which includes all serious and failed sidewalks across the city. Again, there's a pool of funding. Yes, sir.
Is that, is that a computer-generated picture of Fort Lauderdale, or is that an actual picture?
I believe it's an actual picture, yes.
Really?
Thanks to our wonderful StratCon team for some of this beautiful artwork.
Okay.
And again, this, for sidewalks, there's $2 million for each district to focus on some of those district-specific initiatives.
When we, when we first did our analysis, wasn't the number like 40 or 50 million to do the complete job?
Right, and so that number included a number of different factors. So when we looked at our sidewalks and we looked at our very poor, our, there's a scale of, you know, what sidewalks, very poor, serious, what we're looking at are those highest priority needs right now. Some of those items will continue to be addressed through our annual maintenance program, but making sure that we're able to accomplish all of the very high priority items at one time is really the intent of this project.
Because I remember attending a meeting in the Riverside neighborhood, and there was, there, the neighbors there were saying, there's no, there was a need for a sidewalk which did not exist, so this project doesn't incorporate new sidewalks, this is just repair of old ones.
It's primarily the repair of old ones as we talk about that, the larger portion of the funding. For those district-specific initiatives, there is some leeway to do new sidewalks as well. The one thing that we want to keep in mind is, the goal is for our neighbors to be able to see an immediate impact of the work that's being done. So the repair of sidewalks is something that we already have plans and can easily and quickly execute on. New sidewalks may take a little bit longer before they see those new sidewalks, but they're planned here as well as in our five-year CIP.
Ben, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor, yeah, completely agree, and there was, and Raquel, maybe knows best, or maybe it was in Public Works, but the, we were doing a great gap analysis, I think it was called, of the sidewalks.
Correct.
Which, and part of that analysis was identifying, based on the current gaps, which of the gaps would we want to prioritize and fix?
Correct, yes.
And I don't know where that analysis is right now, or maybe you can remind us, or-
Yeah, so as part of our sidewalk master plan, we had some of that gap analysis that was done, and our transportation and mobility team has some information. I see Milos coming up to give an update.
Good afternoon, Milos Maestodo, he's Director of City's Transportation and Mobility Department. So sidewalk master plan is something that we have been working on for the last year, year and a half. We have a final draft of the report. That effort basically looked at the citywide sidewalk network, identified gap, there was about 440- about 440 miles of missing sidewalks. We did data-driven methodology in order to prioritize through tiers implementation of the new sidewalks, based on a cost. It would be, it would be high cost of installing new sidewalks. But through this effort, we'll prioritize those, those most important connections. And to answer your question, Riverside Park would be one of the highest priorities in the first three.
Great, and, and the funding allocation for that, because that doesn't fall into this, does it? It's a separate funding vehicle?
Yeah, so in this, we are primarily focused on the commission's district-specific priorities. But for our sidewalk gap, we actually built it into our CIP. So that's one of the areas that we're building into our five-year CIP, which you'll see this evening.
Perfect, thank you, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Milos.
Thank you, Milos. So when we look at the financial impact of this, what you'll see is instead of $4 million being invested in fiscal year 2026, we'll actually be investing $29.2 million specifically in roadways and sidewalks. To offset the annual debt service, we'll be reducing the annual allocation for the maintenance of roadways and sidewalks, which is the number that you see in the bots on the right, which is $1.7 million. The intent of this chart is really to show that the amount that we'll continue to invest in maintenance will continue to be $3.3 million in 2027 and up to $5.4 million in 2030. So even though we are using a portion of our annual maintenance to offset the debt service, you see that we're still growing our contribution year over year. The last thing to keep in mind is that over the next five years, we'll be investing $47.1 million in roadways and sidewalks. And the idea is to, even though we're addressing the highest priority needs now, over the next five years, we'll continue to work on those other items that were listed on the And so as we look at net steps, if the item is approved tonight, we'll, we are scheduled to close on the special obligation bonds early next month. Procurement and Public Works will begin working through the logistics of the task orders to enhance the level of service in 2026. And since we already have the data in place for some of those highest priority needs, we can start delivering on these improvements fairly quickly to our neighbors. So that is all that I have, if you have any questions.
Any questions for that? Okay, I think that's it, thank you so much.
Mayor, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
No one else does that.
That, is this the biggest investment in sidewalks in a consolidated shortened period of time?
Since I've been here, it is, yes.
So, Mayor, thank you. And so, Mayor, I just want to emphasize what, you know, as a commission, what we're doing here and what we've been talking about, just today, we're talking about $1 billion in stormwater investment, 1 billion. We're talking about, over the next few years, the biggest investment in sidewalks and roads in a short period of time that we've ever had. I mean, so for me, it's the fundamentals is what we need to be focused on as a commission. I think that's what we're doing. We're focused on infrastructure, improving our infrastructure for our residents. I think we can always go faster, but the efficiency and speed with which it's moving is, I think, commendable to our city staff, city manager, that, the whole team. And it, this is what the people are wanting, and I'm proud of what's happening in the direction, Mayor.
All right, great, agreed.
Yes, Commissioner Glassman.
Yes, thank you, and I agree as well, but I just want to make sure that, are we planning on talking to the neighborhoods? Because, believe it or not, there are some places where they don't want sidewalks.
Absolutely.
So I want to make sure that we're getting the buy-in that we think people want. And I just think that will alleviate any problems down the road if we, if we don't speak to these people prior to going forward.
Great question, and as part of the effort that was conducted so far, there was some public participation as well through civic association and a number of neighborhood groups as well. And we do plan on engaging communities as we come closer to implementation, actually before then, to make sure that they do want sidewalks. Just to answer also question regarding funding, in addition to our CIP plan, we do have some surtax funding, about $3 million for design and construction of new sidewalks, and about 1.25, which there's agreement that should be coming before City Commission in the next couple of months, to leverage about 1.2 million of surtax funding to maintain our existing sidewalks.
Great, thank you, Milos.
My pleasure. Okay, thank you. I think that completes that item. Moving on to business five. Okay, so look at the calendar. The only, I didn't see that many meetings that were impacted by holidays. January, there's Martin Luther King, so that's on a Monday, and we're scheduled for the next day. Do we want to have it the next day, or do we, do we want to have it on Wednesday, the 20, was it the 21st? What do we, what have we done in the past? I'm trying to remember.
We've kept it.
We kept it, okay.
That's fine.
All right, so we'll keep that. And then there's President's Day in February, the 16th, it impacts the meeting on the 17th. We just keep that too? Okay, then in April, is that Easter, or?
Yeah, I have concerns about the April, it's, so April 7th, if I'm understanding right, April 7th is during Passover.
Oh, is that during Passover?
Yeah.
But if it's not the first two nights, it's okay.
Yeah, but it's also right after Easter, so I'd, I'd like to see if we can move that, like shift those a week later.
So the 14th and the 28th?
April 14th and 28th.
We're meeting on the, what is it, it's so small, we're meeting on the 7th?
Yeah, it's small.
Anyway, Tuesday's the 7th?
April. So Passover starts on the 1st?
Yeah, it's the 1st through the 9th, I think.
Okay.
And so, yeah, right now.
And Easter is the 5th.
And Easter is the 5th, so I'd like to move it, April, the, yeah, the meeting's the 14th and 28th, if that's possible.
Any questions or objections to that? I mean, I'm okay with that.
I think that would put us back-to-back weeks of meetings, though.
Yes, because then we meet on May 5th.
Yeah, that's all right.
The following week?
Well, it's really not the following week, is it? No.
Uh, yeah, it is.
It's the following week after the 28th.
It's the following week.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
I mean, it doesn't negatively impact Passover, because as Commissioner Glassman says, it's towards the end of Passover, and it's not really.
Right, I, I don't think it's an issue. As long as you're staying away from the first two nights, I think it's okay.
And Holy Week would be the 20, would be the 30th of March, right, Ben?
Yeah.
The 30th of March through the 5th of, excuse me, the 3rd of, of April, so it's not during Holy Week.
Right.
So having it on the 7th, I, I, maybe we should just keep it there.
I'd rather move it, but.
But what is it impacting that you feel?
I, I just, I don't like having commission meetings during holidays, during religious holidays.
Right, but.
And also, it's, it's also, it's kind of spring break time for some schools.
Well, it's gonna be a spring break all month.
Yeah, okay, then, then keep it, Mayor.
All right.
Mayor, I, I have a question that I like to look at the calendar.
Which month, well, we'll move month by month.
Okay, go ahead, go to May.
May is fine, June is fine.
Here's my question. Thank you. So this year, we did move the calendar, we started the summer recess a little bit before, at the end of June.
Right.
So here's my question, if you look at, we're scheduled to have a meeting on July 7th, which is very late for us.
Okay.
We usually, we try to wrap up by the end of June. Can we move that July 7th meeting to the 30th of June? It's still two weeks from the one before it, like we did this time, this year, when we moved it. Are we able to move the 7th of July to June 30th?
So that would mean that we would have the whole month of July, and then the first two weeks of August, kind of what we did this year.
Correct, we come back on the 18th.
Yeah, I have no objection to that.
So if, if I could, you know, we're trying to balance in, in terms of finding the meeting dates, a chart provision and a ordinance provision, what our preference would be, or our recommendation from our office would be, is to move that meeting to July 2nd.
Why?
The code requires that we have, well, the code, the code requires that you have, all right, let me step back. The charter requires that we have meetings no less than twice a month, and gives you an option to eliminate meetings in one month a year for the purposes of vacation. Based on a opinion from a former city attorney, we've calculated that month to be any 30-day period. So you can eliminate a commission meeting within a 30-day window. However, our code of ordinance now requires that you have a meeting on the first and third Tuesday of each month, and we can move and alter those days, which is what is being proposed, but the question is whether or not we would still be within that 30-day window and still comply with this section. So the thought of having that meeting still in July, would have one meeting in July, and then also comply with the 30 days for eliminating the two meetings.
Did we have a meeting in July of 2025?
You did not.
So I'm not understanding then why we can't do that again? Why are you calculating 30 days, just 30 days? Why aren't you just not looking at the month? The name of the month?
If you look at the month, you can't, you have to have a meeting in July.
And how did we get around that for this past June and July?
Because the meeting was within, the meeting that would have been on July 1st was moved to June 30th, which is the day before, which keeps you within that 30-day window.
That's what he's saying to do again. He's saying do it, also do it on June 30th.
Right, why can't we move it again to the same day that we did this year, June 30th?
Mr. Bengal, do you want to comment on this?
It's the same as this year.
Thank you, what I have to say, and what I was, what I have to say is consistent with what Mr. Spence was saying. The difference was that this year, the first meeting was on the 1st. The first meeting in July was on, was on the 1st of July, so that meeting could be moved to the day before. Next year, the first meeting, the first Tuesday in July is on the 7th, so that adds extra time.
I, I don't think I'm understanding it, so forgive me, I.
So as, as this is.
This year, we met June 30th, right? And then we came back on August 19th? So we're looking, so I'm asking why we can't do those exact same dates in 2026?
Because there's an extra week next year. Because the first meeting in July this year was on the 1st, so it didn't expand the time as much as it would next year. So, so, so there's still, there would still be a meeting in July, and then there would, the first meeting in July, but it's not until the 7th. So.
Oh, okay, and I'm not going to belabor this point. This year, just recently, in 2025, we met June 30th and August 19th. So I'm asking why we cannot in 2026 meet on those exact dates, June 30th and August 19th, just as we did in 2025?
Because the way we counted it, it would be more than 30 days.
More than 30 days of what?
Of vacation.
Well, what did we just have? So you're telling me that June 30th to August 19th this year was not more than 30 days?
It's when the, from when the meeting would have occurred.
What, what am I missing? Help me, help me, what am I missing?
This is what I'm hearing. The meeting that we rescheduled this year, the first meeting in July was actually Tuesday, July 1st. The meeting next year would be Tuesday, July 7th, which is seven days further in the month. So the number is calculating more, where we were only doing one day, we're actually moving seven or six days, making it more than 30 days.
But it's the same exact total number of days in 2026 that we would be on recess as we did just do a number of days in recess in 2025. It's the same exact days, it's June 30th to August 19th. So what am I missing? I'm just missing something, forgive me, but I'm missing something.
Well, apparently, our legal counsel seems to think there's a difference, so is it really that important at this stage?
All right, I'm just throwing.
Can we, can we move it to July 2nd?
I'm just throwing it out there, just try to, just trying to understand, that's okay.
Why don't we move it to July 2nd, then? Is that helpful to you?
Doesn't answer my question, but I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Let's do that.
I want our legal counsel to be happy, but someone needs to explain it to me better, but we can do that another time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I need to go back to March.
Okay, what's happening in March?
If we can go back to March.
Okay.
Being a part of the Florida League of Cities, and also Florida Leagues, I usually attend the National League of Cities for the city conference in DC. The tentative date that I've been given for that conference is March, like 14th through the 18th, I believe it is, and I.
Really, that's, those are odd dates, right?
It's got the 14th, but you know how they start, early things, but 16th through the 18th is the actual time that I would consider being there.
Okay.
So I wouldn't want to miss our meeting on the 17th.
You want to do it, move it to the 19th, then?
If we could, that's my suggestion.
That makes sense. All right, so let's move the March 17th meeting to the 19th.
Thank you.
I might join with you, we'll see what happens.
I was listening more to the holiday conversation than not what else needed to be considered.
Yeah, I know, there are meetings, I know. There is a U.S. Conference of Mayors, I don't know when that is, we'll have to figure that out, come back to the commission if it's a conflict. Okay, now we're, now we're in September. Lots of holidays. What are all these holidays? It's too many colors here.
So, Mayor, the purple ones are just possible days for the, for the budget hearing.
Oh, okay, yeah. What's, what are the, what are, okay, for the budget hearing?
And Labor Day is September 7th, and then Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur are the other two, but those don't, those don't, those don't affect the September dates.
Okay, so can we just keep things the way they are, then?
Yep.
There's no need to change anything.
First and the 15th.
Right. October, same thing. November, same thing. What's the 11th, Veterans Day? But that's not the day it's observed, though.
Yeah, it's always on the 11th.
Is it observed on the 11th? Okay, doesn't make it a three-day weekend? Okay, and then December, more Jewish holidays?
Don't look at me. I didn't create them.
Okay, so what are the, what are the, the, the brown, those, that, so, so, I mean, Hanukkah's early this year? Okay, 4th through the 12th, okay. It doesn't affect any of the December meetings, so that's good. Okay, any questions or comments?
Are we okay with Orthodox Christmas, Mayor?
Well, the Orthodox Christmas is the same as the Western Christmas, but I'm concerned when Orthodox Easter is.
Okay.
But I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We want to make sure that you're okay.
I, thank you.
We have all those Jewish holidays.
I'm telling you. What? Where were you? I've been calling your name. What is this? Oh, that's the Winter's Mayor's Conference. Yeah, that's in Washington, okay. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. All right. Oh, April, I just got a text, April 12th is the Orthodox Easter, so I'm good no matter what. Hold on a second, people. One second. April 12th. All right. Moving on to, moving on to Business 6, City Attorney's Search Update. Hello, Jerome.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Jerome Post, Director of Human Resources. The update I have for you today is pretty much a recap of the memo that was distributed by the city manager on Friday, the 29th. Just a reminder that we did engage MGT as the search firm. They had the job posted from July 23 through August 22nd. They did have 30 applicants, and our representative from MGT has narrowed those down to five that he recommends for the Citizens Committee to interview. Those include the following. Paul Bengel from the City Attorney's Office, Alan Boalow, our former city attorney, Sherry McCartney with Tripp Scott P.A., Angela Rosenberg, a local government attorney, and Ronald Tomasco, Assistant County Attorney with Collier County. Now, these folks will all be interviewed on Friday this week by the Citizens Committee, and they will deliberate at the end of the day, and they will refer who they believe you should consider for the position for your discussion on the following meeting, the 16th of September. Questions, comments, suggestions?
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'd like to understand how the city attorney that we fired made the shortlist. When do we hire people back after we fire them for cause?
The shortlist was developed by the representative at MGT after reviewing the applicant's resume, the CV, determined that the person was qualified and should be interviewed by the Citizens Committee.
Nobody suggested to him that we have a general policy of not rehiring people who we have terminated? That, that didn't come across to the consultant?
Given that this is an appointee position, we do have a little more leeway. However, the consultant was fully informed as to the nature of the departure of the applicant.
Unbelievable.
Well, not really. We, we have a history of welcoming back people that have been fired.
Actually, no, we don't. We have a history of trying to block people that we fired from coming back. Sorry to remind you of that, but.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Anyway.
Just, just a question.
Go ahead.
Jerome, the cycle before, how many applicants did we have before? Because we went, we revisit this because we wanted to see a different pool. Was there a significant difference?
I don't believe there was. I don't remember offhand the exact number that we had. The Citizens Committee did interview, I believe, a half a dozen people in that round, and they had three finalists that they had brought to the committee, to the commission, that the commission decided we'd like for an additional search.
City Manager, if I can ask if we could get that number from that original pool before? I just want it for my knowledge, how many applicants applied before versus the 30 that we have this time.
Sure, and maybe we can get that sooner rather than later.
I can get that very quickly for you today, yes.
Jerome, did I remember, I know you just said 30, but I thought I read a memo that said 29. Was there a discrepancy?
There was. One of the finalists, Sherry McCartney, was left off the roster of those, the total number of applicants that applied. So although they were listed 29, it omitted her name. But we did verify that she was the only one that was omitted from the MGT representative.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Jerome? Okay, there being none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, two people have signed up to speak. Yes, I'm getting to you. Wait a minute, you didn't sign up for Business 6. All right, well, would you like to come up and speak?
Push the button, push the button at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the microphone. You got it now.
Thank you.
When you're digging a hole, you should stop digging. Stop the process. This is getting to be ridiculous. What you should turn around to do and say, that you have two extremely qualified people working in the law department today, you should appoint either one or both of them the city attorney. You have worked with the two people I'm talking about for years. They have both proven themselves to be very competent, because the five of you have been asking them questions all day, like you've asked them for years. This is ridiculous that you had a consultant who's so brain-dead as to suggest hiring somebody that was fired. That is political insanity, and everybody would make jokes about it. The members of the city commission should not be the bunt of jokes. I think you should just abort the process, hire either both or the two qualified people you have in the law department. This, this, this process of committees and selection committees and, what kind of a moron would say to the mayor and the, and the vice mayor and the members of the city commission of Fort Lauderdale, hire somebody that's been fired? It's just laughable, and you shouldn't be subjects of laughter by a consultant who's taking your money.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I have the answer to Commissioner Beasley-Pitman's question.
Which question was that?
How many applicants we had during the last round of recruitment? And we had 52 applicants, 16 of which were deemed to be qualified.
And what was the ratio this time?
We have 30 applicants total. I'm not sure if there was a shorter list of qualified applicants. I do know that we have five recommended.
The MGT representative recommended five.
Five out of the 30.
Out of the 30.
Okay, thank you. Mark Dickerman has gone.
Jerome, I'm sorry. Is it your anticipation that the committee that meets on Friday is going to bring us a certain number of people, like two or three, or what do you think? Or is that all just up in the air right now?
That's all up in the air, but it obviously will be somewhere between one and five.
Okay, and that, that's the decision. Thank you for clarifying. I'm already crazy over the dates in July and August next year versus this year, so now I need to be crazier about that one. So that's good.
Just trying to, just trying to keep it simple, Commissioner. Just trying to keep it simple. Thank you, Jerome. Barbara Stern.
Good afternoon, Barbara Stern and Commissioner Glassman. This might surprise you, but I am equally as confused on the dates for the meeting as well, because we had a break and those dates seem to work, so we can agree on something for a change. But I am here about the Attorney Search Committee. I, like Vice Mayor Herbst, don't understand how some of these names were selected, particularly our fired city attorney. I don't know what information would have been removed or given to the recruiter to think that this was a good recommendation. We had somebody who approved the Lockhart Stadium contract that we've heard numerous times was ambiguous, that we've been in mediation over and fighting over for years. We have the one-stop deal that, I believe, City Attorney Spence, a couple months ago, referred to it as an illusory contract. We had the city attorney authorize the termination of Vice Mayor Herbst after the adjournment of a publicly noticed meeting. I mean, we came back in session when Ben, Steve, and Mayor, you terminated him after the meeting was adjourned. Questionably, not great legal advice. We've had a lot of questionable recommendations, so I'm not really sure how we got here. An eminent domain proceeding related to police headquarters, apparently we didn't need. How, how did, how did this happen, that we have a recruiter saying, this should be a finalist? This is very, very concerning. There is a number of other issues that came up during his tenure, and I would strongly urge this commission to reject any effort to move him forward. I think we're going to be the laughingstock of the city, as has previously been mentioned. You just don't bring people back. When Commissioner Herbst was terminated, I made an offer, I was his attorney, I made a settlement offer, let him come back, reinstate him, let him retire in February. When I presented that, I was told not a chance would even be given to the commission to consider. Things would have been different, I think, if that consideration had been given. But with that, I strongly urge you to deny that kind of a recommendation. On a personal note, Mayor, I would like to congratulate you. We heard some discussion earlier about proposals and engaged, and I think you had an exciting summer. So on a personal note, congratulations.
All right, thank you, thank you. We'll see where that goes. Thank you. Anyone else who should speak on Business 6? There being none?
Mayor, I, I didn't hear any. I apologize. There was one part I missed there, because I heard that three of us voted to terminate someone. Who was, who did we terminate, three of us? Oh, I got you. Now I remember, yes. But I also want to, I also want everyone to recall that several of us up here did not vote to terminate Attorney Boalow. So I'm not ready to pile onto that argument right now, but I don't want to get into that detail, but I just want to refresh people's memory that I believe at that time, well, Commissioner Sorenson was not on the commission at that time when we terminated our city attorney. But the mayor and I both voted against that termination, if I remember correctly. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, also, I would like to add into that. The reason I asked about the previous application amount and those who were qualified, when the commission, part of the commission decided and voted to just get rid of the pool that we had and start the process over, it was said that there was not a large number of individuals who applied or did not feel that they had an opportunity to truly have a opportunity to be considered as the city attorney. Now, we heard 52 and 16 for the previous cycle. This one, we're hearing 30 and 6 for the cycle. I'm still uncomfortable with this process and the way that we're going. I too believe that we need to stop where we are and consider the individuals that are currently working for us who are qualified. I will not support someone who I voted for to be terminated, and I gave the reasons that night why I voted, because I was given what I believe and know to be ill advice as how to handle a situation, coming in as a brand-new commissioner. And I don't have a trust value in that, and I don't see how that particular applicant made it past the process to get to that point. If we move forward with this pool, I suggest that we at least eliminate that name and do not consider it. And that name being Alan Boalow.
Well, when the names are presented to us, we have that choice to either accept or reject the recommendation, so we can do so at that time.
We cannot consider that at this point. We, we can do, we are the commission. We can at least discuss it.
Well, you're prejudicing the whole process by anticipating what the committee and what staff is going to further propose to us.
And there's no prejudice existing that we are entertaining a individual that was fired, considered not being, I'm going to use the word, capable for the job at the time.
Okay, so what you're asking is, will the commission take a vote right now to direct city staff not to allow Alan Boalow's recommendation to go any further in the process? That's what you're asking?
I'm saying for us to consider it. If that's not the proper manner, let's discuss to city attorney, if you can tell us a directive or a proper motion to go in that direction. But that's the way I'm leading. I do not want to entertain that particular name in that process.
And I think we, as a commission, can make that policy decision at any time we want. We don't need, we have throughout the years often told our committees what's acceptable to us and what's not acceptable to us.
Right, so I said, so I'm interpreting that as saying that the commissioner wants us right now to take a vote and give direction to the, to the committee and to staff, so.
And I think we should. And Mayor, I think it saves everybody a lot of embarrassment.
Well, we'll see where, we'll see where the vote goes.
Well, no, well, let me just say that I've been, I've been very circumspect in everything I've had to say at this point, because I'm trying not to get into details. But if it comes forward, I promise you that I will not be holding back in any way, shape, or form, and it's not going to look good for anybody involved. So I think it would be a wise choice to exclude somebody who clearly doesn't have the support of at least two of us, and I promise to be exceptionally vocal on this.
Well, Commissioner Vice Mayor, I've never known you to hold back before, so.
Oh, no, I, I.
I'm not expecting any change in your conduct this time.
You have not seen me in full throat yet, okay? Trust me.
I can show you some tapes that really rattled some cages here, but.
That's me being subtle.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, earlier in the evening, we heard how we're not respectful enough to our volunteers, that we've empowered to serve on boards and committees, and we have established a process here. We've all appointed people to this selection committee for the attorney's search. I think it needs to play out. I am not, I'm not ready to interfere with this process and stop this process. If we're going to do that, then it would just make sense to not even have them meet on Friday. Why waste their time? We can just discuss the five people, interview them ourselves, and carry on. Actually, I was, I actually recommended that at one point in time, but everybody wanted that committee to meet, so we established the committee, we appointed the people. I think the process needs to play out and let the chips fall where they may.
I, I wouldn't go with everybody. I was very happy with our last group of candidates that we rejected. So I, I think this process has been flawed since the first time around, where we rejected the advice of our committee the last time. So we've got a pattern of rejecting advice when we don't like it.
I don't remember us actually rejecting the committee the last time.
All right, all right, let us move forward. So I know we're not supposed to vote, but do I have a sense from the commission, like, Commissioner Sorenson, do you have any thoughts on the recommendations being made by Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yeah, I'm very interested in allowing the citizens group, the committee, to do their work. I actually was not in favor of having a citizens committee, but others on this day as were, and so we did. And so if that's what y'all would like, we have to follow through with what we chose in this process to have that committee do their work.
Okay. I, I agree with you, and I agree with Commissioner Glassman, so just let the process go, go through the motions, and we'll see where it ends up. All right. Business 7. This is with regard to the draft ordinance regarding method of procurement. I'm kind of surprised this is on the agenda, because last time it was on the agenda, we kind of said, you know, this was not the time that we wanted to discuss it, and now it's reappearing.
No, we want to talk, or at least I'd like to talk about it, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
I think it was just.
So, well, we need to have a staff presentation first, and then who's going to, who's going to introduce this?
Mayor, I also just want to remind everyone that we have a 5:01 time certain for the budget, so I don't know how you want to do the rest of the day here, but just keep that in mind as well. In a half minute, well, 25 minutes, we have to go to the budget. We have to go to the budget.
Well, your commission report may have to wait till tonight. I know people are waiting with bated breath to hear what you've been doing the last two weeks.
We have managers' report, we have CRA. I'm just throwing it out there.
Hearts will be broken, Mayor, across the city.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, we can have preliminary discussion right now. Let's see, take it for a little bit. Only one person has signed up to speak anyway, so just take a few minutes and kind of open the door, and then we'll see where it goes. Mr. Spence.
Good afternoon, Commission. This is a pre-presentation on the proposed draft ordinance for the public-private partnership ordinance. And I'll just go through it quickly in recognition of time. The ordinance creates a.
Don't go through it quickly. This is important. I mean, take your time, go through each item as you need to, and if we need to cut it, cut it off at 5 o'clock, we can resume the discussion. So this, we need a full-throated conversation on this, so please proceed.
Certainly. So the proposed ordinance creates local rules for implementing the P3 statute. As you know, the P3. As you know, the P3 statute itself authorizes local governments to enter into public-private partnerships. There is nothing in the statute that requires us to adopt anything, with the exception of rates and fees for the evaluation and review of unsolicited proposals. The proposed ordinance delineates a four-phased review process. It requires notification of registered civic associations within 300 feet of the proposed project during the evaluation determina, of a devaluation determination meeting and an award meeting by the city commission. It has provisions that addresses the application, that addresses the application fee. It lists content required for unsolicited proposals or for proposals in general, and it has content required for comprehensive, the comprehensive agreement.
Excuse me, just a second.
Sure.
All these slides that you're showing us, they're not in the backup, are they?
No, they're not.
Okay, because I can barely read them, but go ahead.
Okay. So this is the process that is provided for under the P3 statute. You have the application submission process. Let's roll back. Then you move to the determination of the intent to enter into the comprehensive agreement. At this point in time, if the city intends to enter into a CA, it may publish in a Florida administrative register or a newspaper of general circulation at least once a week for two weeks, and accept other proposals for the same project. It requires the ranking of these proposals and the specifications of the ranking, specification of ranking factors. Then the city commission will have an opportunity to approve a comprehensive agreement. It has to, during that approval process, evaluate, in the case of unsolicited proposals, four factors. One, that it's in the public's interests, that there is a public benefit, that the agreement has adequate safeguards in place to ensure that additional costs or services, service disruptions are not imposed on the public as an event of a material default or cancellation of the agreement, and that it has adequate safeguards in place to ensure future capacity. And then it ends with the execution of the comprehensive agreement. So this is the statutory process, and the green, the two center boxes are the decision-making points for the city commission, the determining, determination whether or not to enter into a comprehensive agreement, and then the ultimate approval of a comprehensive agreement.
Is that the current status of the law?
Yes.
Or is that the previous?
That's the current status of the law.
Current status of the law?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this, and hats off to the city management side, I've borrowed your slide, I think that this one was prepared by Ben Rogers, but I'm going to overlap in terms of discussing, discussing the decision-making process and this proposed ordinance over this slide that was presented to you in a prior presentation that I thought kind of explained the process well. So in terms of the unsolicited proposal, excuse me, the unsolicited proposal is accepted with a $25,000 application fee. That fee is set by resolution currently, and it goes to the city commission for a determination as to whether or not to evaluate. This is considered phase one in the proposed ordinance that outlines the requirements, the additional requirements that are required as part of the application process for unsolicited proposals. So we've outlined a number of, a number of requirements in terms of the content of the unsolicited proposal to be submitted with the packet for review. So upon receipt of the unsolicited proposal, the manager has the ability to review but not reject the proposals at this stage. The ordinance also requires at this stage of review that the manager immediately forward the unsolicited proposal to the city commission for a determination as to whether or not we want to evaluate the proposal. If the commission decides not to evaluate the proposal, the, it is rejected, and we go no further, but if there is a yes, then we go to the evaluation point, which is the phase two. That requires a technical review of the unsolicited proposal. In the case of items that require design professionals, the statute requires the use and the hiring of those design professionals. The fee itself can be increased based on the need for additional review or evaluation.
So let me just stop you right there for a second.
Sure.
So with, let's take a specific example now, with regard to the city hall. We received an unsolicited proposal which then generated five more, so we now have six, so...
So, so we're not at that phase yet.
We're not at that phase yet.
So this is just with the initial unsolicited proposal.
So, but they all gave their $25,000, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
They did? Okay, so, so we're just in the first blue square right now, or rectangle, correct? We've received the application fee of six unsolicited proposals. It has not yet come to the city commission for determination whether to evaluate, or has it?
No, you're actually under the first, in terms of that, you're under the first blue square to the right. You've already...
To the right?
Correct, so you've already...
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, the city commission intend to enter into a comprehensive agreements or there?
Right, so you've already made that determination at the past conference meeting?
Right.
And that you have set a timeframe for accepting other proposals, and so you're in between that, that second blue frame and the city commission ranking under this ordinance, the second blue frame.
And where does the public participation aspect come in here?
So we provide, so what we have are the public meetings and the notice requirements that are under the ordinance to recognize community associations.
Right, where does that come in here between the different rectangles? Because that's an important component in this process.
So the, under the first rectangle...
Right, to the right.
If we go to the left.
Oh, to the left, okay.
Under the blue rectangle for the city commission determination as to whether to evaluate...
Right.
That's at a conference meeting, that's open for public discussion, and then if you go to the right again, under the city commission intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement, that is at a public meeting, open to the public for their participation, and that, and then down the third tran, the third rectangle down, the city commission ranking, that is an opportunity for the public to interact, and then at the actual approval of the comprehensive agreement after that the terms are negotiated. So you have those four opportunities.
Okay, interesting, because no one showed up for the first two to talk about them, so hopefully, perhaps, the next go-around, we can let people know that it's coming up so that people can, you know, chime in on, on the various proposals that have been submitted. You know, I don't want it, I don't want to get to home base, and then everyone say, oh, we didn't know it was happening. So, you know, we're going to have to some point work with strategic communications to make sure the public is aware that when we do the ranking, I guess that's the next stage, that, that the public has an opportunity to be heard and should be encouraged to participate.
We can take care of that along with the charter revision board promotions, because we'll be discussing it on the same conference meeting.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
For clarity, Mayor?
Yeah.
Currently, we don't have that evaluation.
We don't have it, we don't have it yet.
This is, this is new, right?
No, we do have that evaluation.
With the, from the neighbors, we have that in place now?
Oh, not, not neighbors.
Okay, well, okay, that's what I'm trying, what I'm hearing, we're talking about input from our neighbors. I'm thinking what you're saying with this proposal, they would come in at that evaluation point as well? Is that when we would include them in the conversation?
Those are held at public meetings that are open to the public, and they would have an opportunity to, to speak.
Okay, and somewhere in there, those P3s will be posted for their view, and they can look at them and give input? Or is this solely for commission? I think I'm missing something here.
Right, so, so the current process, a lot, a lot of the issues that we are seeking to address in the ordinance were, I guess, caused by the prior version of the statute a number of years ago, that made these P3 submissions, documents that weren't open, that were confidential and weren't open to the public. So they weren't, they didn't have an opportunity to see them at the time. The statute has been changed, and these documents are now available, with the exception of any of the, the portions of those proposals that the vendor has declared to be trade, not trade, trade secrets and protected under statute, and they would have to specifically delineate those, and we would have to redact those from any presentation that we, or documents that we provide the public. So that concern in terms of not being available, those, those documents are available for the public.
But, but, but let me, let me just make sure everyone understands, that when we, that section where it says evaluate proposal, we're not evaluating the proposal.
No, your professionals have to evaluate the proposal.
That's not open to the public yet. They, they, they dig down deep, and they see whether or not the proposal makes sense, whether or not it's feasible, whether or not, you know, you know, works for the, for the purpose for which we intend the, the project to move forward on. Then, then after, the staff will say, okay, one through six either does or does not make sense, they may whittle it down to two, four, whatever, it could be all six. Then it comes to the city commission, which it has, to enter into, the intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement, and then, as we go down the process, the next step you're saying is the ranking, and that's when staff is going to make a presentation with regard to the evaluations of each proposal, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's when the public can chime in on the evaluations, and they'll, and will those evaluations be attached as an exhibit to the, to the agenda item, so that the public can see what staff has, what staff thinks of each one, or is that just going to be done verbally at the meeting itself? Do you recall?
There's nothing in the proposed ordinance that requires an actual evaluation to be attached. So I think it would be the discretion of the evaluation committee.
Well, I think it would be helpful, I think it would be helpful if, if there was some bullet points or something, just so that the, the commission, as well as the public, can kind of see the thinking of staff, like, why the, why the, the committee is evaluating and making ranking recommendations, on what basis those things are happening, or does the staff not rank? Or they just provide, does the staff either rank or not rank? Is it commission that ranks, or is it the staff that makes recommendations with regard to the evaluation and then makes a ranking recommendation to us? Do we, do we know that yet?
Do you, Wayne?
We're talking about the proposed ordinance, or are they under the...
Under the, the existing ordinance. This is, this is under the proposed ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, so, but those, those processes still exist, the ranking process still exists.
Correct.
Right, so...
The...
I want to make this as transparent as possible, and I don't want to...
And under the current process, the, the, the statute does not dictate who does the ranking, and what our past practice has been, it was the commission that did the ranking.
The ranking, okay.
Staff did an evaluation, but I don't recall them providing a ranking in, but I don't recall a, a very competitive, any truly competitive P3s in the past.
In the past, you're right, but this is, this, now we do.
Right.
It would be helpful, going forward, if we could have a short narrative associated with each proposal, which reflects the, the opinion of staff with regard to the viability of each proposal, without ranking. Just give us short narrative, pros and cons, things to look out for, you know, ultimately it's going to be our determination, some of it will be subjective, based on design and so forth, or lack of it, so, but I just, I just think, you know, the public should not be blindsided, nor should the commission be, you know, like, for example, today, this is the first I'm seeing this, because it's not been attached to our, to the agenda item, you know, it's great that we're discussing it, but it would have been nice to know in advance what we're, what we're going to discuss. These are the kinds of helpful tools we need in making decisions going forward, but, so I just want to make sure that we have enough backup when, when we next see this issue come up, not so much just with regard to the proposed unsolicited proposal process, but with regard to the city hall projects in particular, so that we have, you know, we're making an informed decision. Thank you. Please proceed.
So we enter into the next phase, which is phase, phase two, which is the actual After the city commission determines that it would like the unsolicited proposal to be evaluated, and that determination is made as a consensus at a city commission conference meeting that is forwarded to staff for evaluation. The manager is charged with identifying and designating the appropriate members of city staff to evaluate the proposal. That would be an evaluation team appointed by the city manager in consultation with the chief procurement officer of the city to evaluate and rank proposals. After they review the proposal, the evaluation committee will make a recommendation to the city manager to place it on a city commission regular agenda for containing a unsolicited The two recommendations that can be forwarded by the city manager is whether to approve the recommendation of the evaluation committee, written notice which will be given to all proposers, and the city manager would submit his or her recommendation to the city commission, or a recommendation that the city commission reject all proposals. At the conclusion of the presentation... the presentation by the city manager's, of the city manager's recommendation that, on the initial unsolicited proposal at the city commission regular meeting, the commission can make one of the following determinations, whether they would set a public meeting on the unsolicited proposal. This is the alternative process that was adopted by the legislature about two years ago, which allows you to just move forward with the unsolicited proposal. And I have to step back here, because this is all evaluating just one proposal. This is not the other proposals yet. So this is the alternative process where the commission decides they, wants to just go with the one unsolicited proposal that has been submitted. And they can choose to just set a public meeting, through the process that's in the statute, to evaluate that qualified project without engaging public solicitation or bid process, or electing to proceed with just that process. Or it can adopt a resolution, as it typically does, to set a time period for receiving any additional proposals for the same project, or it can reject the proposal. So, again, I want to step back here to kind of explain that process. So the commission at a conference meeting will decide whether or not they want to evaluate the unsolicited proposal. If it chooses to do that, the manager will get together an evaluation team that she selects. That team will review that proposal and make a recommendation to the manager. The manager can choose to move forward with that recommendation to the city commission. And at a regular meeting, the commission decides how it wants to move forward, whether it's with this project and go to a public meeting under the statute, or if it will go through the other process and ask for additional proposals, or reject the proposal outright.
Okay. So that's the, that's the, the box on the left, where it says evaluate proposal, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's use that as a stopping point. And we are, we're almost at 5 o'clock. I'd like to be able to resume this explanation at a, at a future meeting. Marilyn, you had signed up to speak. Mr. Spence, let me allow Marilyn to sign up to speak, and I appreciate the work you put into this, so we have a better idea what the, what the text says. And when we have it again, if you don't mind putting this as a backup, so we can kind of have it to review before the next meeting, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I try to get cute with animation, so it doesn't translate well into print. That's why I improvised it. But I'll try and revise it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you. Marilyn?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Marilyn Momano. I want to clarify why I'm here today. I am not here representing the council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations. I'm here representing myself. We are, but by the by, the council is in the listening mode. I'm here to listen to this presentation and bring back some comments to the council. And hopefully, we will continue our discussion with the city attorney to clarify some of the issues that I frankly am confused about in this. And so my personal position on this is two things. One, there's a lot of good stuff here, okay? There, and the two best parts of it is, A, it's here, okay? We've been fooling around with this now for another year and a half. And two, the ordinance puts this in the appropriate hands of the procurement sections, okay? That's, that's very important. That has, that's new, okay? So there, there is progress being made here, but I personally feel that we are missing some of the true elements of transparency, as you have mentioned. And we look forward to working with the council's office to improve upon that and come back to you with some significant and, and, you know, responsible feedback on it, because I think we can, we can do this. But what I really wanted to talk about today was the alternative option of doing these P3s non-competitively. This is the new section that Paul Weiss talked about, okay? And it has been incorporated into the proposal here, as it has to be, because it's in the ordinance. I hope to hell you never go there, because it's the non-competitive unsolicited proposal.
I don't think there's an appetite for that, Marilyn.
That, I'm very happy to hear that, because of all of the things that the P3 did that was good, was that it opened up for competition, and it encouraged people to put forward the best proposal. It gave you options. That, that change to the statute, as we talked about a year and a half ago, was probably done for some particular project up in, you know, upstate New York. And I'm, I'm happy to see that you feel the same way about it. And that's all I have to say right now.
Okay.
But we look forward to working with the council, if you, if you give them that direction. And we will come back to you with some significant feedback on this.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I want to take like a 10-minute break. Do I have to, do we have to call the budget hearing open first, before we take the 10-minute? I just want to take a little break here, before we, before we can, can we just do that? Okay. We'll break for 10 minutes.